Yes, I can hear you now. I think I heard something, but it was like very faded away. Okay.
All right. Good evening and thank you for joining us for committee interviews being held just before our regular council meeting this evening. Tonight we'll be interviewing two candidates for two vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Do we have any public comment for the special meeting to hold these interviews? All right, well then I would love to welcome our applicants. We have Stephanie Lane in person. Hi, and we have Pedro Paloso on Zoom.
Hello, hi.
Hey. All right, so we're going to be doing this process in a candidate forum style, which means we're going to be alternating between candidates. So you'll start the first time and then Pedro will start the second time. And for opening questions, we'll ask Stephanie to provide the first answer. Try to limit your questions to about your answers to about one minute each. And for the opening question, we've got Councilmember Schaefer.
Great. So this will go first to you, Stephanie, here in person. So members of the Park and Rec Committee advise the City Council and the Planning Commission on topics related to recreation, parklands, trails, and public facilities. So why are you interested in serving on this committee and what special skill set will you bring to this position?
Sure. I am, I've served on the Eureka Open Spaces Parks and Rec Committee for two eight-year terms. I had a little break in between my terms, but I recently purchased a home in Arcata and don't feel right being on that commission instead of the commission in the space where I've chosen to have my home. So I finally got off the Eureka one and immediately applied to any open position. And I was glad that it was the Parks and Rec one. So I'm also a recreation major. That was my undergraduate degree when I was at Humboldt. So lots and lots of rec background and just enjoy recreating in general.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. And same question going to you on Zoom, Pedro. Again, members of the Parks and Rec Committee advise the City Council and Planning Commission on topics related to recreation, parklands, trails, and public facilities. So why are you interested in serving on this committee and what skill set will you bring to the position?
I just moved to Arcata two years ago. I was in Brazil. I'm a Brazilian. I moved to the US and moved to Arcata. And one of the things that we use the most as a family is parks, trails, recreation facilities. And I do have two kids and I do want to serve the community a little bit. And I think because we use most of the parks and a lot of the parks, I think that's the committee I think I would serve the best. And I mostly have experience serving in committees and groups like this within academic institutions, but also in like conservation-related stuff. But I think at this time I would like to diversify a little bit and maybe help with parks, recreation, trails, things that we love and use the most.
Great. Thank you, Pedro.
Okay, so the next question, Pedro, this one will go to you first. Please share about an experience that has connected you with Arcata's parks, open space, or recreational opportunities.
I think I mentioned this in my application and I have recently went back to skateboarding about four or five years ago. And as soon as I got to Arcata, first park I went was the Arcata Skate Park. And that's where I met Johnny Nell. He's in the committee and he's the one that has been suggesting that I should apply because we use a lot of the other parks as well. So I did have experiences with Arcata Park and I saw McKinleyville build their own park. And I think some, as I see our parks getting renovated and new parks being built and the city expanding, I think there are a lot of opportunities for improvement and enhancing and new parks to make the parks in the community better, modern, and safer and more integrative to the community as well. Because I think one of the things that I mentioned yesterday in an email from the Vice Mayor is that some of our skate parks are very isolated from the community. So we feel sometimes that we're inside a cage. There is no playgrounds around. There's nothing around the skate parks. It's just a cage and skaters in there and that we're very isolated either with there or we don't have a space that's integrated with the community a little bit more. That's one experience.
Thank you. So Stephanie, same question. Please share about an experience that has connected you with Arcata's parks, open space, and/or recreational opportunities.
Sure. And I'm structurally not exactly sure if the Arcata Marsh counts as one of the spaces for this commission, but that marsh has been a spot of solace for me for the last 20 years. So I work at Cal Poly Humboldt. On my way home, I often take walks in that marsh. Now for my own home, it's about a four-mile loop. I love it down to the marsh and back. So that pit chunk of land, not only as an incredible project for the city, but also just a place to go and calm down after work or enjoy the sunshine. I was just out there on Sunday with my dog on leash. So that space has been one that's always drawn to me. But I've learned a lot about the Arcata parks. So Bloomfield is a park that's just right around the corner from my house. And it was fun to be able to be a brand-new homeowner and have this community meeting happening about redesigning the park and meeting all the kids in the neighborhood. I just really think that parks are an integral part of community and really want to participate in them and love being around and seeing the people who are there. I'm also in love with the West Ridge Trail that you guys have just completed and put in. I think that's still Arcata too, but I think there's a lot of opportunity here. Thank you.
All right, next question. Stephanie, you'll be first. What do you see as upcoming challenges and opportunities for the city's parks, facilities, and recreation offerings?
Sure. Resources. So one thing through my experience in our Eureka is that I would help do the strategic plan updates to the council. I would, I would always be the presenter for the group because no one else wanted to do it. And we would always say, you know, 1% of the public safety budget could fund all the maintenance for the parks in Eureka. And that was just a statistic that I learned through those presentations and just thought, man, we're really good at getting building things, but it's really hard to maintain things. When things break, being able to find the money in the budget to fix restrooms or vandalized playground equipment. So I know, I know that struggle of finding the grant funding to do something new, but not always having the funding to be able to maintain parks. And maybe that's something we could all talk about and work on and see if there's other creative ways to help the city be able to do that. But I think also just misuse in parks, which can go away or be improved by neighborhoods wanting to take ownership of their park. And so I don't know if there's a big issue in Arcata with improper use in parks, but that's something that I think I would imagine the commission would talk about and work on as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, Pedro, same question. What do you see as upcoming challenges and opportunities for the city's parks, facilities, and recreation offerings?
As an opportunity, and I think with the planned expansion of the city and with the whole expansion of the Cal Poly, of the university to now Cal Poly. I wasn't here before. So when, I also work at the university. And when, before we were hired, it was still Humboldt State. And when we got here, it just changed the name. So we did live through the hype of what was going on. But we do see the changes and expansion and we hope that more students will come. So that is an opportunity to have more people engaged with the parks and giving us new ideas. And I agree that probably budget and money and costs for building new things and renovating what we already have could be potentially the biggest problem. I see that with the university because even though we have potentially new money now, there's always budget restrictions on what we can do and what are the costs of building a new building versus making old buildings, for example, earthquake proof. That's one of the struggles. It's easier and probably cheaper to build new things than to maintain older things. So I, I do 100% agree that maintaining the structures that we have and renovating them could be as important as building new, new parks in the city for the future.
Thank you so much.
So I guess we'll start with Pedro. Please share an example of successful collaboration that you have been part of in the realm of parks, recreation, and community building. What made that collaboration successful?
I have no experience with parks before. I do work in conservation. So I did a lot of community building with natural parks. And I'm not sure if that will fall under the umbrella of the parks and recreation in terms of natural areas. I know that we will oversee some of the trails, but not the natural areas per se. But I do have completed several projects in conservation and helped parks get funding for preserving species and worked together with people that would maintain structures and label trails, but I was not directly involved with that. But I did work with the parks in terms of let's protect this area for the species and then they would. They trails around that, but I wouldn't be directly involved in that part. So I, my experience I would say is, is limited in terms of recreational, the recreational aspect of it. I was more in the other side saying, okay, you can have your recreation, but not around the pond where this endangered species of frog is. I was on the other side of what we probably would do here.
Thank you. And same question. Would you like me to repeat that for you?
I think I wrote it down. Yeah. My first stint in Eureka, I was around for the completion of the skate park, which was like a 20-year project that totally got stalled. So I was, it was exciting to see the closure of a park. And then on my second stint, I really got back on because I wanted to improve Sequoia Park, which is just an amazing park for our region for people to come to. And the Skywalk now has done amazing things. But it's a park that's in a neighborhood that's not eligible for many of the grants that come out. So it needs to be completely fundraised, the money that's needed. And so I worked with city staff there to just write a letter to a community member to get the first $10,000 to be able to do a design and a community input project for Sequoia Park. And now that has turned into a $4 million project with three different phases, connecting with the Zoo Foundation, the Skywalk. There's some money that's going to be able to go to redo the playgrounds. Phase one is already complete. So it's really, was exciting to be on the beginning parts. That really just came down to one quick ask and a letter in collaboration with the city staff to the right person. So that I hold as a success and I can't wait till that full park is done so I can go celebrate it too.
Thank you. I love that you both have experience and background in skate park, either building or as a participant. My daughter did the Arcata Park and Rec Summer Camp Skate Park as a camper several years and then was on the other side doing their leader-in-training program. So she got, so super excited about that both of you. And I'm so excited that you have interest in, well, you're an avid scuba diver. I was now certified for scuba. So anyway, yeah, thank you for that, both of you.
All right, I'm just going to ask one more question, closing, and we'll start with Stephanie. So Stephanie, how do you think Arcata can create more inclusive parks and recreation programs?
I, I'm not well-versed in the programs that are already happening. And I believe there's a new Parks and Recreation Director. I used to collaborate a lot with Mike Rice in the past with events with Cal Poly Humboldt. And we'd also serve on panels for the recreation students to learn about rec careers and pathways. But I really think that including a variety of ages in open community meetings, if that's not already happening, to understand how many people want to use the open space in parks that are in the area. There's a lot, my brain does not come up with the right ideas. When I sit and chat with someone, there's a lot of light bulbs that go off that I wouldn't have thought about. So I think just if it's not already happening, a lot of public comment on how park programming can meet the needs of the people who are there or also just getting volunteers to hang in the parks and see how they're being used and see if there's programming that can get adapted to the folks who are there on a regular basis.
Wonderful. And same question for you, Pedro. How do you think Arcata can create more inclusive parks and recreation programs?
One of the things that I felt once I moved here is that some of the parks are designated one activity parks. So the skate park, as I mentioned, is skate park only. There are no playgrounds. And several of the playgrounds that we visit are playground only. There are no skate spots, sports spots, or sports facilities. And then when we opened Shea Park, for example, that's a designated sports facility with basketball and a fitness thing. But quickly the kids came and sort of transformed that into a playground, even though it's not a playground area. So I think in the future, as we plan these things, I think we could have a more integrated space for all of these things. And one good example is the McKinleyville Skate Park where they opened. They have a skate park there. They have the, an open field for, for parties. And they have the playground there. And one very good example that we did here is the Community Forest Park, where there used to be just the playground and now there's the playground and there's the pump track. So as a father and as a skater of kids that do not enjoy skating that much, sometimes I have to choose either I go skating by myself or I bring my kids to the playground. And in McKinleyville, for example, they could be at the playground and I can do skateboarding. So I think if we plan spaces that have more activities that are connected together, I think the community will be able to enjoy that more, in a more inclusive and integrated way.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else on the council have any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
I just wanted to add that I am, love the idea of integrating it so that parents can watch their children on, you know, the playground equipment. The older youth can participate in another activity. So yeah, let's do this.
All right. Well, thank you so much to both of our applicants. We really appreciate you volunteering your time. It's really wonderful to be part of a committee. So we will go ahead and appoint in our new business section. You're welcomed to hang around or else you can tune in later. We will now briefly adjourn until our meeting starts at 6 o'clock. Thank you so much. at six o'clock. Thank you so much.
Okay, everybody. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the February 7th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. I know a lot of you are here that are wanting to make public comment. We do have a 15-minute public comment at the beginning. All cards for that are gone, but I want to assure you, you have plenty of time at the end to make your comment. So, we will start now with a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat people. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Tonight, we have the Scouts from PAC 95 and Troop 15 to post the colors and perform the flag salute.
Color Guard, attention! Audience, please rise. Audience, salute or place your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, forward march! Color Guard, halt! Color Guard, cross the colors! Color Guard, post the colors! Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color Guard, return to ranks! Color Guard, about face! Color Guard, forward march! Color Guard, dismissed. Audience, please be seated.
Thank you so much. Will the city clerk please call roll call?
Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman?
I'm present, though.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Adkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
All present.
If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an additional agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would wish to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone and raise your hand when it is your turn. You will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to the online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment, please line up at the podium, raise your electronic hand, as soon as public comment is requested for that item. So, the first item is ceremonial matters, and this is a proclamation recognizing February 4th through 10th, 2024, as scouting anniversary week. And I'm going to go ahead and read that. In honor of my husband, who was a scoutmaster for a very long time. Okay. Recognizing February 4th through 10th, 2024, as scouting anniversary week. Whereas, Chicago publisher William D. Boyce founded the Boy Scouts of America on February 8th, 1910, after learning of the scouting movement in London. And whereas, in just two years, Boy Scouts were enrolled in every state, and in 1916, the United States Congress granted the Boy Scouts of America a federal charter. To date, there have been more than 126 million scouts across America, over 2.43 million of which achieved the Eagle Scout Award, scouting's highest rank. And whereas, the purpose of the Boy Scouts of America program is to develop community members who are physically, mentally, and emotionally fit, have a high degree of self-reliance and resourcefulness, personal values, and the desire and skills to help others, and a keen respect for the basic rights of all people. And whereas, scouts are taught the principles of the United States' social, economic, and governmental systems and are prepared to participate and provide leadership in American society throughout active civic engagement. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata recognizes the 114th anniversary of the Boy Scouts of America, designates February 4th through 10th, 2024, as scouting anniversary week in Arcata, and expresses appreciation to the scouts, their families, and the many volunteers of the Cub Scout packs, Scout BSA troops, and the Sea Scout ships of the Pacific River Districts of the Boy Scouts of America for their dedication to our local youth. Thank you for your efforts. Hundreds of young boys and girls in Humboldt County are getting the support, friendship, and mentoring they need to lead successful and fulfilling lives through scouting. Signed February 7th, 2024, by me, Meredith Matthews, your mayor. And to pick this up will be Daniel Washburn, who is in PAC 95 and Troop 15.
Scout BSA Troop 15, I am honored to accept this proclamation recognizing scouting anniversary week. We appreciate the city of Arcata's continued support for scouting and look forward to another year providing service back to the Arcata community and the surrounding environment. Thank you.
Okay, next we have early oral communication. The city council values your comments. This 15-minute period allows people to address the councils on matters not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item, and again at the end of the meeting under item number 12. Please make your way to the podium and raise your hand if you have your cards, and if you're on Zoom, press *9. I am going to take the first four in-person comments and then go over to Zoom, and then we'll come back if there is more time. It is... 6:07 right now. So, um, first speaker, go ahead.
And I think there's something confusing too. The green cards are first, and then the yellow cards, if there's time, so.
Okay. Is my time started? Okay. Hi, good evening, council. Shannon Bettis. Um, I'm here. Uh, it's day 124 of the genocide in the Middle East, in Gaza. It is weighing heavy on my mind and on my community's minds. I have called in. I have not had the resources to come in today, but I'm here today because I wanted to face you in person and personally ask you to please put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. We are at an unprecedented point in time right now. There has never been anything like this in the last 50 years that we need to really personally address. This is, the reason why is because this is fully American-funded. We are paying for this war. This is an American and Israeli war. We will not be able to walk away from this in the future, and the longer that we participate in this, the longer that we drag ourselves to a deeper, deeper war. We are just inflaming the Middle East right now. Um, I feel like I have, uh, used all of my resources to explain my opinion to my constituents, the president, my congress member, the senator. No one's listening to me. No one's writing me back. No one's calling me back. So, that brings me to you. You are our local leaders. You are our first line of defense to say, hey, this is something, this is wrong. This is not okay. We need to stand up and make a stand and say, we're not okay with this. I'm here because of my daughter. I have a six-month-old baby and an almost three-year-old daughter, and I, I can't look them in the face and say, I didn't do anything. And so, I look at you women who I admire and look up to. You have taken your brave to stand here before us today. Please say something. Please do something. Please don't ignore us.
Thank you for your comment. We're gonna need to hold all applause, please. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Dan Shaheen. I'm a Palestinian-American. I'm a citizen of Arcata. The leaders of Hamas have failed their people. The leaders of Israel have failed their people. The leaders of this country have failed their people. When you refuse to stand up against injustice and the slaughter of innocent children, you're failing your people. I beg the city council to not fail the people of Arcata, to respond to the hundreds and hundreds of signatures that have been collected, and hundreds more that are coming, and many people that have come to speak out in opposition to horrible ethnic cleansing going on in Palestine, Israel, Gaza. So, a ceasefire resolution by this council won't save any, won't save a single life in the short term. Our president has declared himself a Zionist and has gone around Congress to pledge unlimited military aid to be used against the captive people who have no food, water, medicine, and most importantly, they have nowhere to go. If we can't look past our own personal biases to see that that is wrong and to simply call for the, a ceasefire, an end to the death of innocent children, then I don't know what kind of community we can call ourselves. I wasn't at the first hearing because frankly, I took it for granted that a community that has been historically committed to social justice and peace would have any qualms. I thought something like this would pass unanimously. It's extremely surprising to me, the lack of support that I'm finding, but I want the council to know that I don't judge them. I don't judge anyone in this audience. I love Jewish people. I love all people. I hate violence. I hate death and destruction. All I can ask is if you can honestly look into your hearts and say that calling for a ceasefire is somehow dangerous to citizens in Arcata, then I would suggest that you look at the facts again, come to my home, meet my Palestinian children, and try to understand why they should be safe.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth, and I'm not here to give you a history lesson about either Israel or Gaza. I don't live in Israel or Gaza. I live in Arcata. So, I would like to tell you how this resolution affects me, living in Arcata. How this resolution, how these peace activists are spreading their peaceful message of love and unity is by ripping down posters of kidnapped children, posting flyers in the bathroom of a community hospital about butchering people in Arcata, which made the news. It was on the news in writing because we want to be known as a peaceful community that supports butchering people, I guess. Um, doxing people online that are Jewish. Really? Really? This is peace? Like the commenter before me said, this is indeed unprecedented times. This is not safe for Jewish community member. This is not safe for children in our schools, if you're Jewish. Um, I'm a therapist. That was told to me. Two people, uh, had diagnostic work needing done at Mad River Hospital, and they were not, they're not scared to go. They're scared to get their medical care at Mad River Hospital. The sign advocating butchering Jewish people was spotted on Monday in the restroom at Mad River Hospital, not taken down until Friday. That's peace? Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
My name is Susan Parsons. People fail to get along because they fear each other. They fear each other because they don't know each other. They don't know each other because they are not communicating with each other. That's Dr. Martin Luther King. It is very important that we continue to communicate with each other, that we understand that we have varying lived experiences. In the lumberjack, a student named Zach Mink five days ago wrote this, and it represents exactly how I'm feeling. I have three Jewish children and three Jewish grandchildren, and we are all suffering, and we are frightened. The biggest challenge with being Jewish on campus at Cal Poly Humboldt used to be the lack of community. There are small groups here and there, but nothing that reminds me of home, a more reformed, modern take on Judaism. After the massacre on October 7th, 2023, which was the worst massacre in history, being Jewish on campus has led to issues that I would not have expected from a school or peers that seem to hold an immense amount of respect for minorities and indigenous people. I still see these empath, empathetic and humane values in some individuals, but from my experience, it has become too easy for people to pick and choose who they respect, value, and who they are open to hearing from. This in turn has led to a new level of blatant anti-Semitism that I have not experienced before. I agree. I have never experienced this much anti-Semitism in my life anywhere in the United States. I want to make it clear that this piece is not about my opinions on the current geopolitical conflict between Israel and Hamas in Gaza, because I couldn't even begin to take on that responsibility, and I don't think the city council can do that either. I'm here simply to share that anti-Semitism is alive and well at Cal Poly Humboldt. It's also alive-
Thank you, Susan, for your comments. All right. We will now go to Zoom and take public comment. Jeanette, is there Zoom comments?
Yes, we have three. Our first is Kira.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Kira, and I'm just calling in to say that I definitely agree with everyone who is saying that the Arcata City Council should not even touch this issue with a 20-foot pole. It's inappropriate and has caused the entire Jewish community here to experience hatred that we have never experienced in our entire lives. There's nothing peaceful about the pro-Palestinian groups. There's nothing peaceful about the pro-Palestinian groups. The Redwood Peace and Justice Center might as well be the Redwood Terrorist Center. Posting things like butcher Zionist pigs and doxing us as individuals should be prosecuted, and certainly not supported by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have screen number 1707-8349781, please. Go ahead.
Hello. Hi, my name is Roy Gomez, I'm running for third district supervisor against Mike Wilson, and I just wanted to commend everybody here for voicing their opinions. I think it's really important to gain consensus. I've been on the campaign trail for a bit now, going door-to-door, and I'm not sure why that ever stops from campaigning. I feel that we live in a small community, and we're blessed as representatives and people in the community that should really communicate more, including our representatives. And, you know, just to reiterate what one of the previous commenters said, you know, in regards to a quote from Martin Luther King, it really is important that we communicate in order for us to not only feel heard, but to understand everybody's perspectives, and obviously, this is a topic that at hand right now is a very divisive one, but I think that as a community, we should be able to come together if we just show the respect that we all deserve, and that each one of our, you know, children deserves growing up in this area. And, you know, I really just want to make sure that people know that as I'm elected third district supervisor, my goal will be to unite and to listen to people, even if it takes going door-to-door. You know, we don't live in Los Angeles where building consensus is more difficult, you know, as representatives representing millions of people. You know, we are in a small community, and everybody's opinions count, and the majority rules in any democracy, so understanding as representatives that if it takes you going door-to-door and understanding what our community is really feeling and getting the pulse.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. It's your time.
Next, we have Laura. Go ahead, please, Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Fiong, and I just want to share that I have, that my children are half Palestinian, and I just get so sad every time I think about the children in Gaza that's lives have just been taken, and it seems that they weren't worth much, that the world isn't sticking up for them. And I would just really love for Arcata to take into consideration that we care about children's lives everywhere, and taking this stand in no means do I have any ill-will towards Jewish people or the Israeli state, but I do think it's really important to look at what's happening and take a stand, because those children are precious, just like my children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, our next one is Lilik. Can you hear us, Lilik?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to say that this war has gave rise to a new antisemitic trend called anti-Zionism, which simplified anti-Zionist incoherently hates their own ill-informed, made-up, twisted take on Zionism, and use it to justify dehumanization and bigotry against an entire ethnic minority group, which includes all Israelis and anybody that supports Israel in the slightest, most of whom, surprise, surprise, are Jewish. If a Jewish person finds you threatening, you are antisemitic, period, and maybe you should not try to explain Jewish terms to Jewish people. Now, hate crimes against American Jews have increased alarmingly since October, and even in our community. The Sukkot on campus was violated two days after the massacre on October, and as people mentioned, a sign saying butcher Zionist pigs was found in the hot Mad River Hospital bathroom, so nobody can really say that it doesn't feel unsafe as a Jewish person in this community. Now, local government has no credentials or business making any statements about this complicated foreign conflict on the other side of the planet, and all these attempts to do so are a disgraceful waste of public resources and time, which also goes against the official policy of the United States. Most importantly, it actively endangers local constituents by offering validation to a misinformed, angry mob to continue bullying and intimidating a local minority group. The blood of Palestinian children is not on your hands, but if something were to happen to a local constituent, you would absolutely be complicit, and that's the bottom line.
Thank you so much. All right, that is going to close our early public communication. We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting, so please stick around, and we will now move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of January 17, 2024. B, bi-weekly report on dispersments. C, adopt resolution number 234-28, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, mid-management confidential and appointed employees to add new human resources administrative service director position, title, and other housekeeping items. And two, adopt resolution number 234-29, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata establishing and authorizing supplemental compensation and benefits for management and confidential employees to reflect human resources administrative service director position, title, and other housekeeping items. D, ratify employment agreement with Cara Vink for the position of human resources administrative services director for the term February 20, 2024 through February 19, 2029. E, approve a change of employees serving as the city of Arcata's representatives on the board of directors for the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, CIRA, and for the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, REMIF, to Tabitha Miller as director, to Danielle Aldred as alternative director, and two, designate the city manager to approve future changes to Sarah and Remif appointments. F, approve an amendment to existing grazing license with A N Hunt &amp; Sons Incorporated, expanding the leased area to include assessors parcel number 501-042-024-026 and 028, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Approve a three-year extension of the garden lease agreement with the Jacoby Creek School for a portion of assessors parcel number 501-042-005, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. H, award a contract in the amount of $394,981 to GHD Incorporated for professional services for planning, community outreach, and preliminary concept designs for the South Arcata Multimodal Safety Improvement Plan, SAMCIP, and South G in Samoa Beautification and Safety Improvement Project. Authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents, and authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount up to an additional $19,750 for a total of $414,731 to address any unforeseen contingencies. And I, award a contract in the amount not to exceed $38,700 without mutual written agreement to Fairbank, Maslin, Maulin, Metz, and Associates Incorporated, DBA FM3 Research for public opinion research on potential tax measures. Authorize the finance director to increase the contract price up to $22,500 for optional additional research services, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar? All right, would any member of the public or staff request an item be removed from the consent calendar?
Last item you read, I don't know what alphabet it was.
Okay, that's I.
Okay.
Mr. Daggett?
I.
I? Okay, so can we get a motion for everything else, which is A through H?
So I would like to move from A to H.
Second.
But I would like, on H, I would like to make a comment. There was landscaping that was done some time ago when we had that project, and it was never completed. So when you get to Jolly Giant Creek, you'll find, which is between H and I, we should really plant some trees there, and I would like that to be considered. And also, you'll see in the median strip, there's two places that is growing grass, and those were supposed to have something else happen, and they didn't. So I just wanted to make sure that we thought about that, and with that, I moved. And you got a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
I. All right, Joanne? For I?
It's actually a general comment, because you're reading all these wonderful consent calendar items, and I come to these meetings all the times, and I usually try and get ahold of a hard copy of the agenda, but the packet is only available online, and I'm hoping that we can do differently in the future, so that people who are coming here kind of understand that it's not just a recitation verbally of stuff, but that there's opportunities for them to see what you're actually talking about, because you're speaking really fast on these consent calendar items. And I just think that having some visual available for people at some point beyond them having to search prior to or things, you know, can the library have these? I know that booklet out there is supposed to have the information, but it's on this very short leash, and so you can't like take it and sit down and look at things. So I just really think with these kind of items that have a lot of numbers, a lot of financial components, a lot of names and things like that, I really would like the staff and the council to really consider a different way of presenting this, so that people can feel really engaged about what they're doing. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Daggett?
Good evening. I'll be more specific, it's I that I'm addressing, and the reason that I'm addressing it is because we're talking about potentially $60,000, and $60,000 is probably more than most people in Arcata even make in one year, so specifically, I don't think you're really understanding the situation on the ground here. We have, I mean, I walk around every day, and you have businesses that seem like they're limping along, you have, your public that's struggling, maybe the university, they just got a 12% increase in their raise, but most people are struggling, so this is money that I don't think you even have, you're gonna have to find it in some fund, and what, so that you can say that we need to raise taxes on everybody for the next election after this one in February? I mean, it's just kind of ridiculous, you're not understanding how people are struggling in the community, and what's the problem that you can't live with a budget? I mean, why do you have to look for more funding? It's like last week, I mean, you had a special session, and you basically, you know, you don't even report what happened, but I think what happens is that, you know, you raise the city manager salary, and now it's come out that she's retiring, and I haven't heard this announcement from you, an income that's probably around $200,000 a year that, you know, is gonna be going out for her lifetime, and so why is it that you can't live with the budget? Why is it that you have to like go after and start taxing people for utilities, you know, sales tax? I mean, it's just, you're not listening to the public here, and it's very disappointing how, you know, once you get in office, and this seems to be a pattern that, you know, whether it's at the federal or the state, that people just seem to get into office and say they represent the public, and then they just start raising taxes on people, and unfortunately, you have a lot of people struggling, so I don't think it's a very good timing at all to do this.
Thank you so much. Any other comment on I?
Yes, good evening, I'm Fred Wise. I want to start out and saying I have a lot of faith in the finance director, and if this is passed, I will be behind it. At the same time, I want to remind the council, and we'll find out what FM3 comes up with, a sales tax is known as a regressive tax. It is more of a penalty on people who are poorer than on people who are wealthier. It's particularly rough on people who have children, families. I'm in favor of increasing the transient occupancy tax. I think that it could be increased quite a bit, and it wouldn't have no reduction in people staying in Arcata. As an example, if someone's paying $150 a night for a place, an increase of 4% there amounts to $6, rather, per night, per person. As proposed, the sales tax increase of 3/4% possible, based upon what the survey finds, would result in about $2 million per year. I have here in my hand a copy of the FM3 proposal, you know, it's $38,700 up to a maximum of $61,200. This is a proposal from FM3 from a year and a half ago to do a survey on the Gateway Project. It is half the price, it was $18,500 or $27,000 maximum, less than half. This was rejected. This would have been a very effective survey for what we're trying to do here, but as I said, whatever you decide, I'll be behind, and we'll see what FM3 comes up with. That's my announcement. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Is there any more comment on a consent item I? Anyone online? All right.
So I would move for adoption of consent item I.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I.
I. All right, the motion passes. All right, and now we will move on to old business. Item A is review recommendations from the Energy and Forest Management Committees pertaining to Humboldt County Coalition for Clean Energies request to support efforts to end local biomass contracts and take actions as appropriate. Can we have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkorn?
Great. Well, good evening, council members and mayor. So for our recommendation for today is to receive a staff report, and then to hear further from Energy Committee and Forest Management Committee representatives, who had some very robust discussions around this topic. So this topic is coming to you today as a follow-up from a presentation by Dr. Wendy Ring on August 16 to your council, representing the Humboldt, Humboldt, sorry, I'm like not getting the right, Coalition for, and I'll just restart, sorry. That was a presentation that was really laid the groundwork of exploring the options for delaying and terminating biomass contract with Humboldt Sawmill Company. And from that, the council really put to our city committees that have a purview in biomass, both our Energy Committee and also our Forest Management Committee, as a lot of the, the majority of feedstock for biomass, power plant power comes from forestry, and could have a real implications for the city's management of our community forest. So just for some background, this resolution came to you really from RCEA, our Redwood Coast Energy Authority, is a joint powers authority, and the city is a member, and for a number of years, they really have been providing power to Humboldt County residents and businesses through community choice. And Businesses Through Community Choice Aggregation, And This Really Is A Way To Keep Local Control Over Energy Procurement And Has Resulted In Cheaper Prices Of Electricity For Consumers. And So, There's A Default Energy Service Called The Repower That RCEA Manages, And The Goal Of That Is To Have 100% Renewable Energy By 2030. And So, That Is What A Majority Or Many Customers Are Enrolled In. Customers May Also Opt Up To Repower Plus, That Is 100% Renewable Energy Sources, And A Number Of Those Are From Out-of-Area Sources. The, You Know, At The Time Of The Formation Of The Community Choice Energy Program, There Was A Lot Of Interest In Ensuring There Was A High Percentage Of Renewable And Also Local Sources In Our Power Kind Of Portfolio. And So, At That Time, The RCEA Had, You Know, Looked At Local Energy Sources And Had Placed Out An RFP To Procure Energy From Biomass Plants. At That Time, There Were Three Biomass Plants Operating, And They Under, They Made Contracts With Two Of Those, Humboldt Sawmill Company In Scotia And DG Fairhaven On The Samoa Peninsula. And So, In About 2018, 25% Of Power To Humboldt County Residents Were Coming From Biomass. And Then Kind Of Fast Forward To 2021, A New State Law Passed, SB 350, That Required Electricity To Suppliers To Source At Least 65% Of State Required Renewable Energy From Long-Term Contracts. And So, When Humboldt Sawmill Company's Contract Came Up Again, The RCEA Board Kind Of Noted This Key Importance Of Having Long-Term Contracts And Extended That Contract, But Also Had A Requirement To Look At Alternative Uses For Biomass Feedstock, Because As A Large Forestry Sector Community, We Have A Lot Of Those Woody Residuals To Utilize And Dispose Of. During That Time, RCEA Also Formed A Biomass Technical Advisory Group, And They Started Meeting In 2023 And Will Continue To Meet In 2024, Really To Provide That Additional Expertise And Community Conversation Around What Comes Next For Our Local Energy Procurement, And Especially For Considering Renewable Energy, You Know, Sources. So, Just, I Wanted To Kind Of Portray What The City Committee's Kind Of Discussion Was, You Know, Around This. And, You Know, Biomass Is Often Considered A Bridge Solution, As We Have A Lot Of This Local Energy Locally, And So, To Utilize Those Local Resources For Power Generation Until Other More Renewable Energy Sources Can Come Online. And In Kind Of Accounting For Greenhouse Gas Emissions For Biomass Power, Often The Greenhouse Gas, Or, You Know, What Does Happen In The Accounting Is Greenhouse Gas Emissions From The Biomass Plant Are Attributed To The Forestry Sector, Since Those Are, You Know, Residues From That Sector, And Any Of The Startup Fuels, Diesel Is Coming From The Energy Sector. And So, In Some Of The Greenhouse Gas Accounting, It Can Seem Carbon Neutral. We Know That, You Know, Also Just Any Combustion Of Biomass, Whether It's In Your Woodstove, At A Biomass Plant, Or In A Wildfire, You Know, Does Contribute Carbon, Carbon Emissions, Particulate Matter, You Know, Air Pollution. What We Also Note And What The Forest Management Committee Really Noted Is That Catastrophic Wildfires Have Been Occurring More Frequently With Our Many Decades Of, You Know, Wildfire Suppression. And When Those Catastrophic Wildfires Occur, Even In The Redwood Region, Like We've Seen In The Last, You Know, Couple Years, They Really Can Have An Outsized Impact On The This One-Time Big, You Know, Release Of Greenhouse Gases, Air Pollution, Particulate Matter, Really Kind Of In Comparison To The Controlled Aspect Of Biomass Generation At A Plant. The Forest Management Committee Has Also Really Noted That Biomass Power Generation Is A Key Component To Ensure That We Can Continue With Forest Restoration, You Know, Activities Here On The North Coast, And I Think That That Has Real Implications For How The City Manages Our Community Forest. So, When We Talk About Forest Restoration Activities, I Think A Commonality Is A Focus On Improving Stand Characteristics Of Our Forest, That Is To Really Increase Fire Resiliency, Increase Habitat Value, And Also Really Increase The Ability Of A Forest To Store More Carbon Over The Long Term. And These Forest Restoration Activities Also Do Involve Cutting Trees, And So, Those Restoration Activities Can Include Both Non-Commercial Thinning And Also Commercial Thinning. And So, When, You Know, The City, This, You Know, In 2024 Is Planning A Larger For Us Commercial Thin Of About 100 Acres In A Younger Stand Recently Acquired In The Jacoby Creek Forest, And That Is A, That's A Commercial Thinning, And That Enables Us To Continue The Goal Of Forest Restoration, And While Also, You Know, Paying For Being Able To Do That By Selling Logs. So, We Sell The Logs, And Then There Are Residuals At The Mill, And It Is A Cost, And There's Both A Greenhouse Gas Emission Cost And A Financial Cost For Dealing With Those Woody Residuals. And Being Able To Have The Biomass Plant Here, You Know, Locally Is Really An Option Not Only For That Particular Sawmill, But For The Other Sawmills That The City Often Works With To Purchase Timber. So, It's Part Of The Picture Of Being Able To Do These Fire Resiliency Projects, And Also Being Able To Sustainably And Keep Funding Our Sustainable Forest Management. You Know, Both Committees, You Know, Talked About, You Know, Having, Eventually Having Alternative, You Know, Uses And Processes For Biomass Feedstock, And Those Are Currently, You Know, Being Explored And Will Take Time To Develop. You Know, Some Of Those In The Future Could Be Biomass Gasification, You Know, For Hydrogen Fuel, Or, You Know, Larger-Scale Composting Facilities. And You Know, Some Of These Are Currently Being Explored And Worked On By RCEA And Others. You Know, On A Related Note, The City Has Been Very Invested Working With Our Regional Partners And Humboldt Waste Management Authority, You Know, On That Related Note Of SB 1383 And How We Deal With Organic Waste And Food Waste. And Just Tomorrow, Humboldt Waste Management Authority Board Is Going To Be Exploring What Is, What Is That Capacity Planning Look Like For HWMA To Start Being Able To Have An In-County Composting Facility Just For Food Waste And Just For Green Waste? So, We Have A Lot Of Material, And We Don't Yet Have A Full Capacity To Do All Of That Composting As One, You Know, Alternative Use. So, The, A Lot Of What The Forest Management Committee Discussed Was Being Able To Have As Many Tools As Is Possible To Manage Our Forest, And The Energy Committee, You Know, Really Made A Motion Not In Opposition To Many Of The Points Of The Resolution, But Really Recognizing That Not Wanting, Really Not Wanting To Put RCEA At Risk Of Not Being In Compliance With SB 350 For, You Know, Not Having Those Long-Term Contracts At The Percentage Needed, And Not Having Both A Reputational And A Financial Impact That Could Impact, You Know, Energy Customers Throughout Humboldt County. Both Of, On Committees And Communications, You Know, Across The County, You Know, Have Really Expressed Interest In Working More Closely With The North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District To Understand More Detailed Reporting Of Air Quality At This, You Know, Particular Biomass Plant, You Know, As Well As Gathering More Exposure Data Within The Community To More Fully Understand Potential Human Health Impacts, You Know, At That Location. And Those Are Some Efforts That RCEA Is Already Starting To Deploy With The Air Quality Management District. Air Quality District Staff Are Present Tonight, Brian Wilson And Jason Davis, For Any Questions That You May Have Of Them. We Also Have A Representative From RCEA, Both Richard Engel And Eileen Verbeck, You Know, Have Presented To Both Of Our Committees. And Then Also Encourage The Council To Hear From Energy Committee Rep. Michael Winkler, As Well As Forest Management Committee Rep. Yana Valikovic. Thank You.
All Right, Thank You For That Staff Report, Emily. All Right, So, We Have Sarah Schaefer, Who Is The Chair Of The RCEA Board, And Full Disclosure, I Worked For RCEA For Five Years Previously. I Did Not Have Anything To Do With Purchasing Power. I Explain To People Why Their Bills Were High. But, So, What We're Going To Do Right Now Is We'll Just Have Some Discussion And Ask Some Questions With The Council. We'll Open It Up For Public Comment, And Then We'll Come Back For More Discussion. So, Councilmember Schaefer?
I Just Want To Disclose That I'm The City Representative On The Air Resources Control Board.
All Right. Lots Of Representation.
We're full up here, yeah.
All Right. Would You Like To Start? Councilmember Schaefer?
Sure. I Don't Really Have Too Many Questions, Because As, I Hear About This A Lot. We Know At RCEA, If Biomass Is Going To Be On The Agenda, It's Going To Be A Long Fun Meeting. But, I Just, You Know, Looking At The Staff Report And Hearing From Emily And Looking At The Work That Our Committees Have Done, It Kind Of Leaves Me With The Idea That I Already Thought Of Like, Hey, Wait, There's Still A Lot Of Pieces Moving, And There's Still A Lot Of Information Coming Out And Things Happening That Both, You Know, The Air Quality Board Is Looking At Possible At These Violations, Our Biomass Technical Group Is Doing A Lot Of Work, The CAC Is Doing A Lot Of Work At The RCEA Level, That Board Staff, You Know, Are Kind Of Putting All These Pieces Together And Looking At How They're Moving Right Now, And I Think That, You Know, It Kind Of, You Know, Might Be Hasty Tonight To Go Forward With A Resolution, But To Kind Of Start To Have These Discussions And Kind Of Just Think From An Advocacy Standpoint Too, And Hear From The Public About, You Know, What's Going On, And Especially For Me, As A Board Member At RCEA, It's Important To Hear From The Public On These Topics, Just Because Not Everybody Comes Out To Those Meetings, But They Will Come Out To A City Council Meeting, I Feel Like More Often. And So, I Don't Have Too Many Questions, But I Feel Like, I Wrote Down Just Kind Of Some Musings And Points That I Can Go Over, But, You Know, I Think That This Dream Of Talking About, Yes, Fully Renewable Clean Energy By 2025 Seemed Like A Possibility, You Know, 10 Years Ago, But Looking At How The Entire State Of California Is Going That Way, That There Really Are Serious Infrastructure Concerns, Just With, You Know, Feasibility Of The Grid, And Certain, You Know, RCEA Is Wrapped Up In, You Know, Waiting For The Sandrini Solar Project To Come Online And Having To Procure More Power, And Looking At These Long-Term Contracts, They Are Hard To Secure, And The Prices Are Very Volatile, But That Doesn't Make The Environmental Concerns Less, And So, It's Really All About Balancing, You Know, Those Concerns With Being Able To Procure Contracts, But Also Being Able To Use The Leverage Of These Contracts To, You Know, Make Things Better And Have Better Air Quality Control And, You Know, Make Sure That The Information Is Out There And Available To The Public, And Also To Look, You Know, At Alternative Uses Of This Forest Stock And The Waste That Is Coming From The Mill. There's All Types Of Bioenergy Too, And Just To Kind Of Say, Oh, Biomass And Only Think About Humboldt Sawmill. It's Easy To Do In Humboldt County, But There Are A Lot Of Different, You Know, More Futuristic Ways To Use Bioenergy As Well. And, You Know, Humboldt Sawmill Did Do A Report On Alternative Uses Of Biomass, And Nobody's Got To See That Yet, So, I Think That They Probably Found Some Really Interesting Great Stuff In There, If They're Not Willing To Share It Yet. And So, You Know, Overall, I Think Right Now, It Would Be A Little Hasty For This Council To Move Forward With The Resolution, Because I Think There's A Lot Of Moving Pieces Still Out There, With The Air Quality District Still Kind Of Responding To This, These Permitting Woes, And, You Know, Looking At How Some Of These Particulate Matters Are Above The Threshold, Some Violations, Also Waiting On, You Know, The Work That The Biomass Technical Group Is. I've Talked To Some Members Of That Group, And They Feel Like, Yes, We're Not Really Ready Yet. We're Still Having Robust Discussion. We're Still Kind Of Working Together And Getting All The Pieces And Information To Make A Really Informed Recommendation To The RCEA Board, So. And Also Reporting, I Know A Lot Of, A Couple Community Members Wrote About Getting Reporting From The Energy Authority Too, TEA, Who Does The Billing For RCEA, And Really Too Looking At The Financial Impacts That Would Have On, You Know, Customers, People That Carry A Bill With RCEA And PG&E. So, I'll Stop There, I Think.
That's Good Stuff.
That's A Lot Of Thoughts, But Yeah, So, Thank You Guys.
I Think, I Assumed Councilmember Schaefer Would Summarize It Really Well For Us, As That Is Her Council Assignment, So, I Appreciate That And Agree With What She Brought To Us. And I Think, I Just, I Don't Have Questions At This Point. I Really Want To Hear From, You Know, The People That We Have Lined Up To Speak As Well As The Public, And We Did Receive A Lot Of Correspondence From Folks Regarding This, Which I Appreciate. And So, I Think Even Before Going Into Discussions, What I Really Feel Confident In Saying Is That The All The People, Or The Vast Majority Of The People That Will Be Speaking On This Tonight, Whether It Be In Support Of The Resolution Or Holding Off And Waiting And Working Towards Those Goals In A Different Manner, Really Are On The Same Page. I Absolutely Believe The People That We Will Be Hearing From All Really Care, As Do We, About Our Environment And Steps That We Need To Take To, You Know, To Help Reverse And Preserve And Continue, You Know, Avoid Doing More Damage To Our Planet. So, I Just Think It's Important For Me To Say That, That I Really Do Believe That People Are Going To Be Coming From That Same Point Of Really Caring About Our Planet, And I Look Forward To Hearing From Them. And Just Also, In Some Of The Comments That Were Brought Up, You Know, Regarding Violations Or Wondering About Different Things, I Think Moving Forward In This Process As A Community, What Is Really Important Is For People, You Know, The Powers That Be That Are Discussing And Are Working On These Things To Just Be As Absolutely Transparent As Possible And Inclusive, Knowing That This Community Cares Deeply About That, And I Think That That Will Really Help Build Trust And Help Build Consensus Among People If We're Allowed To Work Together On It. Thank You.
Now, I'm Just Looking Forward To Having Public Comment. That's What I Was Thinking About.
So, Thank You, Sarah, For That, And I Do Concur That It Would Be Hasty To Move Forward At This Point In Time. I'm Looking Forward To Hearing From Our Quality Staff That Have Come Here, Michael Winkler And Everyone Else, And Of Course, The Community. I'm Happy To Hear That Exposure Data Is Beginning To Be Collected With The Air Quality Folks. Yeah, So, Here We Go.
You Know, I Saw, This Was On The Day As Today, And I'd Not Seen It Before, And This Is A Report From The Air Quality Resource Board. Is Someone Here That Wants To Speak To This Really Quickly? And I Believe There Are Some Copies On The Table If Anybody Feels Like They Want I Was Asking For Someone That Represents, Is That You? Far Out.
Sorry. Is there someone?
Oh, Okay, Then We'll Hold Off For Public Comment. Thank You So Much. And Someone From The Air Quality Board. I Would Love To Hear You Come Up. Thank You.
My Name Is Brian Wilson. I'm The Air Pollution Control Officer And Executive Director For Air Quality Management, North Coast AQMD, North Coast Air Quality, Air Board. We, Am I Limited To Three Minutes Or Just Questions? Okay. I Have Some Comments Here That I Think Will Address Most Of Different Questions That I've Heard Over Time. I Just Found About This Meeting, You Know, This Morning. We Don't Generally Follow What The RCE Does With Their Contracts. We Don't Have Skin In The Game. We Don't Have A Comment On The Resolution One Way Or Another. Most Air Districts In California, Not Most All Air Districts In California, Through The California Air Pollution Control Officers Association, Is In Support Of The Biomass Concept As A Plant. And This White Paper That They Have In Support That All Districts Signed On To, South Coast, Bay Area, Sac Metro, San Joaquin, San Diego, And All The Other Smaller Districts Like Us, Have Supported. us, have supported. Of course, we want them to run well, and we support them when they run well, but in concept, for all the discussions that everyone's been having of why biomass, is it better to burn, you know, locally through a stack, or on the fuel floor, or transferred, or whatever the case might be? But there's a lot there. We're three-county jurisdiction, Humboldt, Dunhill, and Shreve County. We're delegated by the EPA to enforce local, federal, and state regulations. When we have an air district permit, it's very similar to the water district. We try to put everything to be friendly to the source, we call them sources. That's the perma-tee. So they are better in compliance, that's what we want. We want them to be in compliance. And so when we have a permit, we have all these terms in there and conditions, and some are local, some are federal, or some are state. And there's a lot of misunderstanding of how kind of those permits work. The first thing I think I might probably address is Humboldt Sawmill Company's Title V Operating Permit, Title V being, it's a major source. We have several, although over the years, it's smaller, but PG&E is the other one, and then the other one that's not operating is DG Frehhaven, it's the biomass plant. So I think, in short, the one big concern that I heard was whether or not they have a valid Title V Operating Permit. We believe they do. There's a renewal process that occurs every five years. It's not on the revision date of the permit, it's on the renewal date of the permit. And a lot of things can happen in the renewal. So what happens is, you can imagine, if you issue a permit on such and such date, and other regulations come out, you might wonder, well, then, how do you enforce those? Well, you still enforce those. You enforce them outside the permit, and then you enforce them in the permit. Obviously, it's much clearer in the permit, because you've been able to put things on tables such as, you know, daily, weekly, monthly, hourly, and try to give them, you know, the everything so they can give it to you and make our lives easier as a regulator trying to oversee them. But when you renew their permit, you also take, it's not just a renewal of their permit, an inclusion of any new regulations that might occur. The Boiler MACT or Boiler MAC was one of the ones that you probably heard about. That's a new regulation that became enforceable at a certain point in time. It's not in their permit, but they're held to the requirements of that, and it will be incorporated in their permit when their permit's renewed. The other thing that happens when you do renew a permit is you might also roll in, for lack of any other way of describing it, small modifications, big modifications, and other things that might happen. So you try to take advantage of that moment. They might have added a piece of new equipment, and they have an authority to construct. Well, through that renewal period, that piece of equipment gets renewed, not only is the permit renewed, but you also modify the permit with all the new regulations and also any new changes that may have occurred. So a lot can happen for the renewal period.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but how often, then, are you testing the air quality out in Scotia?
Large question. I'll try to shrink it down real quick. We don't have regulatory monitors in Scotia or Riedel. The closest regulatory monitor is at Jacob's Elementary in Eureka. Not uncommon for air districts not to have regulatory monitors everywhere. As you can imagine, they're very expensive, and there's a lot going around with what you have to do with all the data and everything. There's monitors in the stack that are way better, that won't tell you necessarily what's happening, because, remember, a permit, it's a permit to pollute. It's a permit to make emissions. We're just following those federal, state, and local guidelines, so they have a permit to pollute. We're just a regulator making sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. So, you know, keep, definitely keep that in mind, but, and so there is emissions going up the stack, and there is dispersion. But the EPA and every, all the construct is, is that what's in that stack, if you monitor in certain ways, then you can be, have a good idea of what's happening in the community. And so there's opacity, there's what's called a comms, and there's also what's called a SEMS, C-E-M-S, for emissions monitors for the gaseous pollutants, that are in their stack. And they have to do source tests on that, they have to do, give us that data. One of the settlements we had a couple of years ago was to give us access to daily data for their opacity, which most districts don't have that. You have to, we have to wait for you to tell us how you've done and provide the data, and then we go over it, and then, you know, see if there's any notices of violation. So it's, there's a lot there. If you were to put out ambient air monitoring in the area, you have to be cognizant and worry and think about what that might mean. And what I mean by that is, say you put Purple Airs, I think a lot of people are familiar with Purple Airs, that's a PM 2.5 device that's about the size of a soda can, is that, you know, is, if you start seeing, you can see them for wildfires, if anyone's ever looked at AirNow, fire.gov AirNow, you'll see different monitors at different times have different exceedances or increases. You don't always know if it's, on a given day, if there's no wildfire, if that's from wood stove, if that's from the source, if that's from what someone's doing open burning, and on and on. Now, can you draw conclusions? Sure, but you can't do any notices of violation from that. The regulatory standard is what goes up in the stack, what you monitor, and other things. So it's a, there's a lot there. Some places do fence line monitoring, or try to pepper, and I'm not saying they're a bad thing, but we can't take action on them. Now, if Energy Authority wanted to do something like that, and we have engaged with them on that, provide some extra data to kind of look at, but it's a little different than our world.
Okay.
If that helps.
Thank you so much. I'm just wondering, if RCA ceases to buy power from Humboldt Sawmill Company, would another CCE or PG&E snatch up that power? I mean, is it still going to continue to burn if RCA is not buying power?
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Richard Engel from Redwood Coast Energy Authority. I'm Director of Power Resources, so I'm the one responsible for making power procurement decisions at the staff level. And to answer your question, things have changed a lot since 2017, when we first started serving load and first started procuring energy from Humboldt Sawmill Company. At that time, we entered into power procurement with them at a price that was really above market level. It was more than we were paying for renewables from other sources at that time. So, you know, it could be, could be said, at that time, that we were subsidizing HSC. Things have really changed. We really get three different products from Humboldt Sawmill Company. We get the energy, the megawatt hours of electricity. We also get resource adequacy, which is capacity that were required by state regulations to procure in certain amounts. And we also get renewable energy certificates from them, so that we can certify that this is making up part of our renewable energy portfolio. The prices of all three of those commodities have gone up pretty dramatically over the last few years. And because of that, the contract pricing that we have now with HSC, which we actually negotiated downward a couple of years into the contract, is actually a good bargain for us now and compares favorably with other energy procurement. I think that if we were to stop procuring our energy from HSC, I think, I could say now, and I wouldn't have said this two or three years ago, but I do believe that they would probably not have difficulty finding a different buyer for that power. So, in my perspective, it's unlikely that the plant would shut down as a result of no longer doing business with RCA.
Awesome, thank you. I just have one more question for you, because we were talking earlier, and, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails about people asking, you know, why do we have to use biomass? Why can't we just put solar panels on everything? And can you explain kind of to us why that's really not feasible to just rely on solar?
Sure. We do have some solar under contract, and are going to have a lot more of it being delivered starting later this year, when we expect the Sandrini Solar Project in Kern County to come online. That one project alone is going to provide more than 40% of our total electricity need. But because it's solar, it's delivered in the middle of the day, and it doesn't match the shape of our customer load. We obviously have load happening, you know, early in the morning, in the evening, and overnight. And so, one way to help make solar match better against customer load is to add energy storage, and we're starting to do that. We're starting to procure more contracts for energy storage. That will help address that, but it's, the combination of solar and enough storage to even out that solar is still considerably expensive and has long timelines to develop. And so, it's not something we could swap out overnight. As time goes by, we might see a combination of storage and intermittent renewables like wind and solar start to be able to make up most of our portfolio. But at this time, resources like biomass plants that can run around the clock and are deemed renewable by the state of California are an important part of our portfolio for that reason.
All right, thanks a lot, Richard. Let's stick around, we might call you back up. But I think right now, what I'm going to do is open it up to public comment. So this public comment section, did you have a question, Emily?
Really, just also to make sure to, I think our Energy and Forest Management Committee representatives may also even more eloquently than I convey some of the conversations that they, that they had as well.
All right, then let's invite them up first, Michael and Jana. Love to hear some thoughts from you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Emily.
Well, I have no connection to the forestry industry, so I have no financial axe to grind. I've been in the renewable energy field for about 30 years, and I'm currently Chair of the Energy Committee, previously on RCA Board for a lot of years. I think the factor that had the biggest impact on what was almost unanimous vote of the Energy Committee to not adopt a proposal from Wendy Ring to cancel the biomass contract was that, based on what Director Richard Engel said, is that it would have a very large negative financial impact on RCA. He mentioned resource adequacy, and so each load-serving entity such as RCA has to acquire what are called resource adequacy, what basically mean is energy sources that are not variable. And so, by and large, that solar doesn't count, wind doesn't count. And so there's a tremendous amount of competition among utilities and other load-serving entities for this base load, constant power. And so we have it here in Humboldt County with the biomass plant, and we got a very good deal on it based on the current high price of it. And so I think that that was the biggest concern and the biggest reason for not wanting to cancel, not recommending to the council to cancel the biomass contract. Other aspects of this is, I think the question is, is biomass energy renewable? It depends on where it comes from. If you're cutting down old-growth trees, it's not renewable. If it's coming from mill waste of trees that are already being cut down, and the trees are regrowing, then it is renewable. So basically, what's being used in a local power plant is renewable, but there are other biomass uses in other parts of the world, in other parts of the country that are not renewable. Is it carbon neutral? A lot of people contend that it's not. But my analysis is that it is carbon neutral, both short-term and long-term. And is it complementary with other renewable energy sources? As I said, these other renewable energy sources are variable, so we increasingly need sources that are constant. And if we want to remove, move away from fossil fuels, so we need things that are fuel-based, or having to use very expensive batteries, and if you're trying to do it seasonally, that won't work. So, in that way, biomass is very attractive, because it's fuel-based, and you can run it constantly in the long run, you might be able to even have it follow the changes in demand. And let's see, as I said, impact on RCA would be very negative, because it would be, there's so much competition for this type of constant energy source, that it would be very expensive for RCA to acquire that resource adequacy in some other way. Let's see. Wendy Ring was also saying that her idea was for it to be composted rather than to burn it, but that is not financially viable at all. That currently, the biomass energy production is a revenue source for the, for Humboldt Redwood Company, and it would be an expense to have to compost it. So that would also have a negative impact on them, and they would be not inclined to do that. So if composting were done, there would have to be an outside financing for that, since it would be an expense rather than a revenue source. And, long-term, I think that biomass has, can have a tremendous value, that currently, you know, there's pollution coming from burning it. They have two types of pollution control, what's called an electrostatic precipitator and a baghouse for filtering it. It's not perfect. More, obviously, there's more pollution than there is from burning natural gas or from solar wind. But long-term, long-term would be to gasify it and to, which would allow it to be, have much more value, much lower pollution. And so I think there's a lot of value in keeping the power plant going for that time when it can be used in the best way and used in a lower pollution way. So I think that the committee was interested in making sure that the power plant is fully compliant with local air pollution regulations, and also that, this is a very old power plant, so I think we would like to see this eventually replaced with more advanced technology that would be lower pollution. And I think for all those reasons, the Energy Committee did not go along with the idea of canceling the contract. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. And then a representative from the Forest Management Committee.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jana Valikovic. I am a member of the Forest Management Committee, a role that I've had for 24 years. I am not the oldest, long-living member of that committee, so just to say that we've been around and working on this for a long time. I do wear many hats in this. I am a resident of the city. I am also with the University of California, and I do represent being the county's forester. I serve on the Forest Management Committee. I also am a part of the Technical Advisory Committee for Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and at the state level, I serve on the Governor's Wildfire Task Force and the Science Advisory Policy Committee, as well as the Wildfire Mitigation Committee and the Risk Management Committee. So thinking at many scales and many dimensions is much of what the city does, and I take pride in being able to be a part of the city's stewardship and management. Just, I will, I will keep this brief, but the Forest Management Committee had a robust discussion. We appreciated both the presentation from Dr. Ring, as well as Redwood Coast Energy Authority's staff. We had six of seven committee members strongly oppose the resolution. And I just really want to say, I mean, it's fun to actually just to touch back into city politics and see how, you know, much passion we have for the work we do in our communities. And I just really want to applaud Dr. Ring's years of public health service and her commitment to stewarding our community and thinking about these issues. But I want to bring us back to, you know, the responsibility that we have, both as residents, as community members, as council members, as committee members, for the stewardship of the city forest land. And, you know, the watershed protection, the recreation, all the co-benefits are essential to our ability to be good and responsible stewards. And so, you know, the resolution, whether it's symbolic or not, would be counter to the city's ability to manage its forest lands. Let me just put that straight out. And there's a lot of counterfactuals that you'll hear tonight, potentially around the pros and cons of these issues. But I just want to say, you know, you'll hear the argument that the Scotia Power Plant does not use the byproducts of forest restoration. And I think what we heard from our Environmental Services Director, that really, when you think about what forest restoration is, it's pretty broad, and it includes lots of stewardship activities that do result in commercial sale, that do result in commercial sale of logs that are part of stewardship of land, because it really helps thin out those forests and helps us create a higher value, a forest in much better condition overall. So we need to think about what those mechanisms are to be able to keep that process going forward. I took out someone in a walk the other day, and they're like, really? This is not old-growth forests that you're managing? I'm like, no, this is a 110-year-old second growth, and we've worked very hard at it through a series of interventions, through a series of thinings that have led to commercial sale, to really help steward these forests and put them in great condition. So it's really in Arcata's interest to make sure that there is a viable network for processing of our sawlogs, as well as all the residuals that come from our forests. And there's, you know, there's a lot, a lot to this, and I don't want to take you down the rabbit hole of minutia and energy and forestry, but I just want to say that we live in the North Coast, and sometimes we live in our own style and our own isolation. One out of every eight acres in California has burned in the last 10 years. One out of every eight acres. We haven't felt it so much in the Humboldt Bay here, but when we start really scaling up to what we need to be prepared for for wildfire, we are way off the mark. And we've lived in a time period and era where, you know, habitat conditions and preservation of every bit of wood we could was really our strategy, and it's put us in a very dangerous place. So we are going to have to get to pace and scale and think about many different ways to be able to thin our forests. to be able to thin our forests, and to be able to manage that level of fuel that is left behind, that is both benefit for wildlife, but also at great peril for the conditions of these forests going forward. So creating systems where we can have markets to be able to move some of that small diameter material, stuff that we would typically lop and scatter and leave out in the forest, so that we can get it out of the forest, so that it doesn't burn up in uncontrolled wildfires, or in burn piles, where you've got great emissions that come from the carbon that's released in that process, the black carbon, that's really what we're trying to do. And, you know, the bioenergy plant here is very much an elegant solution to that problem. If you all recall, the teepee burners of the past, there's only a few of them that you can still see. This is what came in to solve that challenge and has done it very well. One of the other additional pieces to keep in mind is that as a nation, we really disinvented, invested in technologies around wood utilization for the last couple of decades. We closed a bunch of our forest products laboratories. And we're in a place of rapid catch up, because we now realize that there is great opportunity for more innovation, more different ways to work in this space. But we've got to catch up, and we're just not there yet. So you're going to hear a lot about other, other solutions, other ways to manage this stuff. And we're getting to the point where, you know, with time, we'll be able to build out and show that some of these concepts are are at scale and can work. But we're not quite there yet. So, you know, I'll just, you know, close by saying, from a big picture point of view, we need to keep the infrastructure in place across the board. And we need to figure out how we're going to get to pace and scale. I don't know if you've been looking at the videos from Valapariso in Chile. This is an issue that is not unique to California. It's not unique to Hawaii. It's, it's really this problem of us living in a space and era where we think we can have so much abundant vegetation. I'll conclude by saying, when you think about trees, they're really biodegradable solar panels. They're very good at carbon capture and storage. They have a natural system of recycling. We're talking about the, you know, the bioenergy of carbon itself and bioenergy of carbon. We're not talking about fossil fuels. We're really talking about the utilization of that atmospheric carbon pool and be able to, you know, store it in in trees, store it in long live wood products, and be able to continue and cycle that. And so, you know, with your leadership and with your previous council's leadership, we've done a really good job in the city. And I just want to encourage you all to think about how we have as many tools in the toolbox to be able to manage those forests through time. So thank you. And I happily engage at any point on more Forest Management Conversations or take you all on some tours.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we are now going to open it up for public comment. This is public comment on this agenda item. So if you're speaking on biomass, please line up at the podium. This is for this agenda item only. So let's line up.
Good evening to everyone, and to you, audience, everyone that's listening. My name is Paula Jones, and I allot my time to Farid Ahmed.
Hello, everyone. My name is Farid Ahmed. I am the block captain of the Jacoby Creek Watershed Neighborhood Watch. I'd like to clarify some points that Ms. Sinkhorn had brought up regarding the intention that she declared for cutting 100 acres of the Jacoby Creek Forest, proclaiming that that would be something healthy for the forest. First off, I would like to make it clear that since Emily Sinkhorn has taken office, she has shown no levels of morals or ethical concern to the Jacoby Creek Forest or the Jacoby Creek community. And she has, in fact, been terrorizing many elderly members of the community and disabled members of the community, and bullying them using her power and throwing out around her weight as the new environmental director. The Jacob, the redwood forest ecosystem and all forest ecosystems require the use of their biomass. Extracting biomass from the forest is harmful to the natural evolutionary development of the ecosystem. The trees that fall in the forest naturally are required to replenish the soil nutrients and create the grounds for the next generation of trees while stabilizing the sliding mud landscapes that they operate on. It is extremely harmful and detrimental to be continuously taking out these trees from their ecosystem, and it debilitates the old growth conditions of the forest from ever returning. In addition, I am a Muslim, and in accordance to the Islamic faith, and inside a passage of the Hadith, it specifically references the trees as Imam. And you will not be coming through my private road and property in order to slay these worshippers of Allah, the Most Holy and Most Merciful. And if you attempt to do so after being made aware of these Islamic beliefs, you will now be declaring your intent to commit a hate crime against the Islamic people. I would like to also reference a passage from historian Howard Zinn in his book, People's History of the United States of America, referencing in the first year of European arrival in Virginia, 1607, Pahawatun addressed a plea to John Smith, exacting his spirit. Why do you take by force what you may have quietly by love? Why will you destroy us who supply you with food? What can you get by war? We can hide our provisions and run into the woods. Then you will starve for wronging your friends. Why are you jealous of us? We are unarmed, and we are willing to give you what you ask if you come in a friendly manner. And not so simple as to know that it is much better to eat good meat, sleep comfortably, live quietly with my wives and children, laugh and be merry with the English, and trade for their copper and hatchets, rather than run from them, and lie cold in the woods, feeding on acorns, roots and such trash, and be so hunted that I can neither eat nor sleep. By 1610, the English were going through periods of starvation, and many ran off to join the Native Americans, who took them in regardless of their history of cruelty. When summertime arrived, the governor of the colony requested for Pahawatun to return the runaways. And according to English account, he replied no other than proud and disdainful answers. Soldiers were then sent out to take revenge. The native tribes may not have had the wealth and treasure as the people do today, but that does not mean its people were displeased. The richness of the natives came from routine joys, clear skies, thriving blossoms, and a land of gentle hearts. That is the backbone on which they flourished. If you were a colonist, you knew that your technology was superior to the Indians. You knew that you were civilized, and they were savage. But your superior technology had proven insufficient to extract anything. The Indians, keeping to themselves, laughed at your superior methods and lived on the land much more abundantly and with less labor than you did. And when your own people started deserting in order to live with them, it was too much. So you killed the Indians, tortured them, burned their villages, burned their cornfields. It proved your superiority in spite of your failures. And you gave similar treatment to any of your own who succumbed to their savage ways of life. But you still did not grow much corn. The notoriety of such vulgar behaviors from Western practices is commonplace in the content and context of American history. Yet the implications of such deteriorated systems of value and how it impacts society and the world today is often undermined by the exertion of the same false notions of supremacy still being implemented to this day. Where once verded regions lush with life now remain barren and struck dry, replaced by rows of factories with smoke stacks that vent black filth into the skies, polluted waters, food under strict control. The U.S. Department of the Interior at the dawn of the industrial age referenced America's rich seas and the cod, salmon, lobster, and other seafood they supplied operated as the most productive and profitable fisheries on the planet. Yet in less than 10 years, there has been up to a 90% loss in bull kelp off the core coast of Northern California. In the 1966 Steelhead Restoration and Management Plan for California, it reported that two-thirds of native fish taxide in the California is extinct or declining. Within the past 40 years, once thriving wild fisheries, such as the Jacoby Creek, have been reduced to endangered ecosystems on the brink of complete extinction, left entirely up to local private landowners to conserve and restore due to twisted and skewed deprioritization by local, state, and federal government agencies. And lastly, I would also like to remark on the energies part of the, what you referenced, that I already brought up, the NASA technology they have, that they use in their spaceships for hydrogen fuel cells, and being able to use renewable biomass from the poop and turning it into methane.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Nancy Ihara, and I'm with the Clean Energy Coalition. And I do want to just kind of, before I read my note, you know, what I've written is, is just kind of comment on the amount of greenhouse gas emitted by the biomass plants is greater than coal and fossil fuels. And, and it's not reabsorbed as in 40 to 70 years back into the forest. And we don't have that time. So I just wanted to say that. So we are all aware that we are facing a climate change crisis, and that we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. In our county, the Humboldt Sawmill Company is the second largest emitter of greenhouse gases, 300,000 metric tons of CO2. The transportation sector is the largest. The health impacts of biomass incineration on the people in our county is also very great, especially for people living in Scotia and Meodell. And I know you've gotten some of the specifics and comments that, written comments that you've gotten. There are alternatives to biomass combustion that are way less environmentally damaging, both in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and health impacts. These alternatives include gasification, pyrolysis, composting, and more. And we need to really be pushing industry and, and, you know, to make that happen. Because of the numerous Clean Air Act and permit violations, RCA should be able to terminate the present contract with HSC. As the concern seems to be that by terminating the contract, RCA will not be compliant with SB 350. The Energy Authority, which is RCA's energy procurement contractor, needs to be asked to determine how much it would cost and how long it would take to replace the biomass with clean energy. Until that information is available, I ask that the council postpone making a decision concerning the proposed resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be a little bit all over the place, because I want to try to address a number of the things that have been said. The, first of all, the air pollution control officer's endorsement of biomass was, their white paper was written at a time when the alternative to that was open burning. And open burning of commercial sawmill waste is no longer allowed. So that's just an old and outdated paper. There are the, we have looked at the reports from Humboldt Sawmill, and they are not burning fuel that is coming from other than their own land. And, and only about 3% of that, they categorized as any kind of fuel reduction or, or forest health activity. So there is a huge need to do something with all of this woody, I don't even want to call it waste, because it's a resource, really. It's an organic resource that we have. But I think that the problem is, is that we have this really old, really dirty, really inefficient plant, and it's owned by multi billionaires. And as long as they are getting millions of dollars from RCA to keep doing what they're doing, they have very little incentive to do anything else. I have read the report, that consultant's report. I'm not sure why everybody else says it's inaccessible, because I read it. And it says that they could do gasification, they could do pyrolysis. And it's just a question of whether or not they want to put the money in. And so I think, you know, what, what would really be good for the community is to have an investment and make something big enough that you could take in fuel reduction residue from other landowners, from our, you know, from, from our public land. And, and we're not going to get that, and we're certainly not going to get a contribution from Humboldt Sawmill unless we stop giving them all this money. There are alternatives that are commercially happening right now, to make biochar, to make what's called wood wool insulation. There is composting going on at the scale with the same kind of tonnage that Humboldt Sawmill has. So there's hydromulch, which they go out and spray from airplanes after wildfires. So, so I just want to, you know, give you three numbers to think about. 550 and 5,000. So 5 is the number of planetary tipping points we are on track to reach in the next 10 years. And that includes things like the collapse of major ice sheets that raise sea level, that change ocean currents, rapid thaw of permafrost, which would release huge amounts of methane. 50 is the pounds per CO2 of CO2 per megawatt hour that RCA claims on their power content label. And 5,000 is the pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour of the, of the electricity that comes out of Humboldt Sawmill's biomass plant.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Gil Coonan from Sunnybury. I'm a resident of Humboldt County for 40 years. And I'm just going to tell more of a personal story here. Let's see, the issue that I'm here to address the issue of the contract RCA maintains with Humboldt Redwoods or the mill, its biomass electric production. So my son was hired by Humboldt Redwoods, that owns this mill, about 10 years ago as a forester. As part of his orientation, he was told about the clean renewable energy the biomass plant produced, and how, when they bought the business, millions of dollars was spent on upgrading it so it didn't pollute. In other words, he was sold, you know, things that weren't true. In 2023, I shared a fact sheet that had been prepared about this plant and the harm that was being done to the community due to numerous air quality violations. He was very skeptical and defended the plant, even though he no longer worked there. Then just last week, he told me he was wrong about the level of pollution. He had been, he had heard about how the residents of Scotia and Meodell find their cars covered with a fine soot every morning. If there is that much soot, can you imagine what kind of air they, including children, are breathing 24 hours a day? This plant needs to be shut down as soon as RCA finds other sources of clean energy to purchase. And as has been addressed, there are other kinds of clean energy and things to develop if the, if the money and resources and pressure was put on the mill. The city of Arcata needs to consider the consequences of their choices and make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Prescott, and I work for the Forest Service. I've lived on the North Coast for the past 25 years. I graduated from Humboldt State in Environmental Science, and then went on to do a master's in environment community, because I've always been keenly interested in public lands and our relationship to the, to those lands, how we value it, how we interact with it, how we use that. And in working for the Forest Service, I've been able to really dissect all the trade offs when we look at how we manage resources, and what that means to people and those implications, and really trying to understand those market and non-market benefits. I recently transitioned back to the Six Rivers National Forest, because I'm really focused on helping to resolve and address this wildfire crisis on the North Coast, and then more globally, climate change. And then in doing so, how we uplift our communities through economic and community development. And so in this pursuit of this work, really trying to find an opportunity, how we can best utilize some of those forest restoration byproducts, those smaller diameter trees, those submergental, those species that there is no readily available consumer market for it, how do we utilize that so that when those restoration treatments are being done, so our forests are not overstrained by insect disease and drought and prone to, you know, catastrophic wildfire? We can't just stack up all the residuals in the forest and let it sit there. We're putting our communities and our rural communities in grave danger and risk. So trying to catalyze those markets, we're working on that. And I love it that people I've heard are aware of all these developing technologies. But as Mrs. Valakovic referenced, we are in a massive catch up game here, and we are not there yet. We really need to keep any sort of viable options for a diverse portfolio for biomass utilization on the table. And so the decisions that you're making here about a specific plant, I, I agree. It sounds like it needs an upgrade. It's an old plant, but let's not It's an old plant, but let's not, you know, the implications go much broader and put our communities and our rural communities at risk. So, and then the trade-offs for what are they going to do with that sawdust at that mill? They'll probably end up transporting it to another biomass facility. And the carbon implications for transportation should not be understated. Thank you so much for considering my comments.
Thank you so much.
Well, Paniac Arcata resident, I support the text of Dr. Ring's resolution, and I would like to add a few comments. The Energy Committee failed to clearly show that the greenhouse gases created at the plant are truly sequestered locally and in a short time. An engineering equation might make it so. However, trees don't care about the source of CO2. Trees only store carbon during the day and certainly not in the timeframe to avoid massive climate changes. Next, the California Air Resources Board website has data for point source pollution such as HSC. Pollution is displayed under criterias of criteria pollution in tons per year and toxic pollutants in pounds per year. Data is required at least every four years. The HSC report shows that the plant's toxic output is above the local air district's high threshold for cancer toxins, chronic toxicity chemicals, and acute toxicity chemicals. An ARB representative explained that these thresholds require the power plant to generate an emission inventory plan and work with the regional office to comply with AB 2588, Toxic Hot Spot Reporting Information and Assessment Act. Is this clean? All the members of the committee already have, the city council, have data clearly indicating that, and I verified it an hour ago, that the, they're above the high toxic threshold level, plus the list of tons of something called criteria pollutants, things carbon monoxide, various organic compounds, nitrous oxide, and all the particles include down to PM 2.5. The PG&E power plant does not exceed their toxic thresholds. The Forest Service Committee didn't address the health issues, nor did anyone refute the healthcare cost and opportunity cost for excess morbidity and mortality for single point sources of pollution. Nor did the Forest Management Committee explain why the cost of forest maintenance should be borne by ratepayers instead of built into the cost of lumber. The easy solution is to kick the can down the road. That should not be an option when we need massive changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Council. John Anderson. I'm the Director of Forest Policy with Humboldt Sawmill Company and Humboldt Redwood Company. We have a couple of representatives here, so I wanted you to know that we are in the audience and welcome any questions you might have. I just wanted to thank the local air quality district here for guiding us to make sure that we are staying in compliance of our permit, which we are. Also wanted to address the question about the investments that we have in that facility. Those totaled $10 million to date since we bought that facility. And those are emissions controls and other upgrades. And ever since our inception, we've had a policy of having an open door, whether that's going out to our forests, will take anybody anywhere. But that also includes our facilities. So we welcome you to come down and see what's going on at the plant, see the emissions controls, staff as well. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have either today or hopefully on a future tour. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diane Rarsen, and I support your decision not to come up with a resolution this evening, but to continue to look at alternatives. And I hope you will take the suggestion that RCA commissions a report from the TEA. That's an independent type of report, and that can give us more information that they make that report available to the public as soon as possible. So since we know that biomass burning is dirtier than using even natural gas, I think if we want to use this terminology about bridges, that we should bridge with the natural gas and not pay money to Humboldt Sawmill Company and its partner, the Humboldt Redwood Corporation, to burn their biomass. If somebody else wants to buy it, fine. And under our capitalist system, we know that they're going to continue to do this until it's not profitable for them. And so, but we, as ratepayers, don't have to be part of the support for that. And I would like to call to your attention EPA's new recommendation for the 2.5 particulates. And they've downgraded that so that it, they've reduced the amount that is safe for us to have. So, and on a national basis, not here in Humboldt County, but on a national basis, it would save 100,000 lives a year. So we're not talking about something that doesn't really have a health impact. And as long as we keep paying the Sawmill Company to, you know, burn their waste, and they only use a small portion of the energy that they burn anyway. So we're responsible for the two-thirds, paying for around two-thirds of it. So personally, I don't particularly like to social, to subsidize corporations. But when I think back to what our forests were like, or could have been like, in the 1850s, when they'd been under management by the Wiyats, the Wailakis, the Yurok, the Hoopa, the Karuk, all of the tribes that were around here in the redwood forest land, their management didn't result in these massive, frequent climate disasters. They had climate disasters, but they weren't happening at the rate they're happening now. And so why is that? And so think about the management of forestry. You know, I remember in the forestry where they used to say that, that, oh, old trees were senescent, and they can't really store carbon nearly as well as young trees. Well, we finally broke through that myth. So I urge you to please find the courage to question the recommendations from the Energy and the Forest Management Committees, because there's no way that this can be carbon neutral. We wouldn't be in the situation we are if it were carbon neutral. Thank you.
There's been a number of articles in the New York Times about this issue, and I would first say that California is the most expensive in the nation as far as electricity rates. And part of the problem is that, you know, we're trying in that goal to go all-electric for the state, but the majority of our electricity is actually produced by natural gas plants throughout the United States. And solar is, you know, a very small percentage of it. There's solar farms that are on the East Coast and in the West that, you know, basically they're chopping down forests to create acreage to have enough space for the panels. And there's plenty of investment that's going in towards the solar, but the problem is the capacity. Nobody wants to make the first step in paying for those very expensive wires to bring that energy to different locations. So in this case, what you're facing, I mean, there aren't a lot of good solutions. I mean, I went to RCA's workshop with trying to go all-electric with the heat pumps. It was pretty interesting, and I would say that the problem there is it's very expensive for, I mean, I asked for a quote for like a 1,200 square foot house, and it's like $50,000. So we have, we have this goal with the city here that we want to go all-electric, but, you know, the reality is that most people can't afford that. And I would also point out that our solar companies, the major solar companies, this was an article in the New York Times, have left the state because last April, basically, PG&E pulled the plug on, as far as the credit they were giving to individuals that installed solar and had heat pumps. So they have left the state to go to other states. So it's not a very positive sign as far as this direction to go into as far as alternatives. And, I mean, it seems like natural gas, which is, you know, it's a carbon, big carbon draw, but it's better than what was before, was coal. That's why we're much cleaner. And I would point out that the scientists, that the number one thing that we can do is basically, most of the housing in the United States and here in Humboldt is very old, very inefficient. So we're losing all our heat, whether it's gas or whether it's going all-electric. It's a terrible carbon footprint. So the top scientists say that we should be going after our housing stock and making it more efficient. And that's going to be a way of, you know, reducing some of this by 30, 40%. So.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and this is a fascinating topic. I'm glad we're talking a lot about it. Conservation, conserving the forests, conserving our energy, conserving the planet for the future generations. Conservation is never talked about. We talk about switching our energy sources and what Gregory just spoke up about insulating our homes. This is really, really something that needs to be looked at. And a lot of these things cost money. So we're talking about money and trying to develop technologies to get away from burning wood in old sawmill plants. $14.3 billion went quickly to the Middle East last fall. That $14.3 billion could be spent doing things like this, developing the right kinds of technologies and systems to create a livable, a livable place for our community. $14.3 billion is money that could be distributed, some of it to our community. So just really think about where our money is being spent and what we could use it for instead of polluting the environment thousandsfold through war.
Thank you for your comment. If anybody else wants to make a public comment, this is the last call for online, in-person public comment. I'll be going to online and not coming back to public comment in person.
Can I make a few more comments? If anybody can be sure.
Yep. We're going to put the timer on you.
Oh, that's fine, too. It probably would be about three minutes. Just a couple additional thoughts, if I could, that might help you in your toolbox or tool belt for figuring out what to do about HSC and contracts with them or resolution or whatnot. The finishing of what I was saying earlier with biomass plants, one thing is different with this biomass plant than with others, and this is not in defense of them at all. It's just something that people tend to overlook sometimes, is that this is a woody biomass plant. They don't burn construction debris like many of the other plants do in the I-5 corridor that they're compared to. They burn construction debris, railroad ties, shingles, and everything else. It's a certain percentage. Something to keep in mind when you're comparing, because it isn't always an apples-to-apples comparison. Another thing is that when we're talking about the, whether or not they have a valid Title V permit. What the air district has done, if you recall, is that they have a certain deadline, I think it was July 2023, of which is the renewal date, so back up five years from that. Six months prior to that is the regular, what it says in our regulations and rules of when they're supposed to turn in a timely permit. But they turned it past that date. So did they turn it in after the renewal date? No. But did they turn it in before that? Yes. Are they in violation of turning in less than six months? Yes. But what, what I'm trying to say is, the point of takeaway is, what we're saying as an air district is that it's a procedural violation, and it is not any different than any other districts in the state. I've checked with South Metro, Bay Area today, all the other air districts. In fact, I even have data indicating that exactly what I'm saying is the same thing our air district is doing is the same thing that the other air districts do. It's not quite seen as the way it was portrayed to you. So keep that in mind. Certain tidbits can kind of sway opinions. The other item that might be, and it's the same thing I think I told the RCA board, was notices of violations can vary. It's kind of the same thing if you're to say someone's a bad driver. How do we determine, you know, if folks are a bad driver or not? You know, we sometimes use points, you know, the insurance companies use points. I think we all might agree if someone has more than, you know, a couple drunk DUIs or whatever, or crashes or whatnot, then we start, all kind of started agreeing, oh, they're a bad driver. But parking tickets, how many parking tickets? And it's the same thing in our world. We don't judge it that way as a regulator. We don't, just because we're regulating them and coming out, say, with a favorable or unfavorable opinion, doesn't mean we're in support or in support of biomass plant. We're a regulator. So when we have NOVs, when we issue NOVs, it's a notice of violation in our world. It simply starts the process. The exact same thing happens if you're an open burner and you get a ticket from us, or if you're a gas station, or you're a crematory, or you're PG&E, or anything else. It's simply saying, we noticed something that seems to us in violation of what you're supposed to do. And so we resolve those.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
All right, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Absolutely. We appreciate you. Any more in public comments? Let's go to Zoom.
Okay, we have Anna. Please go ahead, Anna.
Yes, hi. Really quick, my opinion is that we should very much listen to indigenous people when it comes to living in harmony with nature. They have been living in harmony with this planet since the dawn of mankind. And there seems to be a little bit of a cognitive dissonance between acknowledgement of the damage of our settler colonialism and realizing the implications of barreling towards our shared dystopian future. There seems to be a war on indigenous peoples and their values worldwide, but there are plenty of energy alternatives that are available. For example, actually burning methane, I don't know if you knew this, it converts CO4 into CO2. There is always going to be plenty of methane available as a natural resource. Burning methane is better than releasing it, and we all produce methane. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Simona, please go ahead.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
I, sorry, I can speak about the Israel-Gaza conflict, correct?
No, we are talking about biomass right now. If you have a comment on that.
Sorry, did I miss? Because I, is there going to be a chance to speak later?
Yes, after we get through the rest of the agenda.
Oh, sorry. So let me remove my hand. I apologize.
No worries.
Okay, one last check on the online comment for the biomass item, and I'm seeing no further comments.
All right, well, then we will bring it back to the council. Lots of robust discussion, lots of food for thought. Anybody want to make motion or say anything?
Just to add to the public, too, because I think that, you know, this, this council is not ready to make any actions or anything, but RCA is a lot more active in this issue and it is their contract as well. So just please don't hesitate to reach out to your RCA Arcata rep. That's me. So, thank you.
Well, one of the thoughts I have is that, you know, eventually, we're talking about mass timber, and maybe eventually we will see that actually happening, that we can have that in our county, that it is something that has been approved for building permits and by the building codes. And that might be a place that eventually we can see all this material going into building or creating mass timber that we can use within our buildings. So that's a thought that I have when we think about what we have in the way of resources. And also, I know that as far as, it's taken a long time for the Forest Service, but they have finally understood that the way the indigenous people in our communities maintained the forests and maintained, no forest fires speak of, is that they actually burned within the forest so that they had access to them. And then the, our Forest Services, wherever, you know, Washington, CC, or whatever, made a decision that we shouldn't do that anymore. And that is one of the reasons we've had these massive forest fires. And I feel like now the Forest Service understands they have to manage the forests, and doing so, it will help a lot with our forest fires. And that means they're going to have to do small fires or clean up their debris, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm looking forward to new technology and mass timber.
Councilwoman White, do you have anything that you'd like to add? No, thank you. All right. Again, I thank everybody so much for their comments. This has been a lot of information to digest, and does anybody?
Just thanks for everyone that showed up to discuss this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know that everybody is really looking forward to making public comment. We do have several more things on the agenda, so hang in there. Our next agenda item is, two of our council members are going to have to recuse themselves, so I'm going to suggest that we take about a seven-minute break and regroup, and we'll come back. Thank you. So David can come back to the table. We got everybody we need for this topic.
I'm so sad.
I know. Everybody. All right. Consider gateway overlay zone and affordable housing policies in the general comprehensive update, general plan comprehensive update. All right, we're going to be breaking this item into two sections. So the first is going to be a review of the gateway overlay zone, and we do have Council Member Adkin Salazar and Council Member Stillman that have had to recuse themselves. So let us have a staff report from David Loyack.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. I wanted to start by outlining the topics for tonight, just briefly, and then I'm going to jump into the gateway area combining zones or overlay zones with the presentation. But first, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the EIR that was released January twenty-sixth, the circulation period, the public comment period. Technically started on the thirty-first, but certainly folks would have been able to comment as of the twenty-sixth. And so that public comment period runs between January thirty-first and March eighteenth for the environmental impact report for the gateway area, as well as the general plan more broadly. So I want to just mention before we dive into the detail and the specifics that that is out for circulation now, folks can send me directly at dloya@cityofarcata.org their comments on the document, and the Planning Commission is going to have a public hearing on March twelfth to take comments from the public in a public meeting. Okay, so having said that, I'll touch base on the gateway overlay zone, we'll go over that in detail, and then I wanted to ensure that I've got it right. We're going to take a pause and have the other council members come back to talk about homeownership, correct? Okay. So that's the plan for the evening. Okay, so gateway area combining zones, there's been a lot of, a couple of topics that have come up, there's been a lot of concern about what the effect of the combining zones are. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to explain to the council and to the community how these function, why the Planning Commission made the recommendation that we use combining zones in the gateway area. And what I will say is that the confusion is warranted. There's a lot of moving parts. What I would say is that this is a complex topic and that it has a lot of features to it. There's a lot of facets, and the way that the different documents relate to one another is complex, but it's comprehensible. And so what I'm going to try and do in this presentation tonight is provide for you the same content. I'm going to provide you the information on how these different documents work together in multiple different ways, in an attempt to hopefully, you know, shed some light on these combining zones. Okay, so first, I want to start with what a combining zone is, so that we have a common understanding of what it is that we're talking about. So I'll just define it, and it's a long definition, but a combining zone is a zone that's applied in addition to the underlying base zone, to parcels or even just portions of parcels, with a set of similar characteristics specific to a geographical area that is distinct from other more general attributes associated with parcels in the base zone. I know that's really conceptual and hard to follow, I'm going to give you a lot of examples, but the three key pieces is that it's parcels or portions of parcels with a specific set of characteristics, specific to a geographic area that's different from the more general characteristics that the parcels may share with others. I also want to say, before we get into detail, that combining zone is what we call them in our land use code, in our zoning ordinance. More broadly, they're referred to as overlay zones. I may use both of these terms interchangeably. They mean the same thing. In our zoning ordinance, they're technically called combining zones. Okay, so I want to give you an example of how those three characteristics, the, you know, specific parcels with a set of characteristics that's different from the broader characteristics refined to a geographic area, using our Creamery District combining zone. Now, this is a combining zone that we adopted probably about seven or eight years ago, that's centered around the Creamery District. What you see here in the aerial image, we're looking south, this is K Street with the bend as it turns to Alliance here. I've highlighted in yellow the Creamery Building property. And at the time, when we were trying to develop some specific zoning around the Creamery District, there was a drive to try and loosen up some of the uses, to really respect and reflect the, you know, the entrepreneurial sort of spirit that was going on in the district, and the art spirit that was going on in the district. And so the city worked with the community out there to take a look at the underlying zoning. This shows the base zoning, the light purple or industrial limited zones, these are current zoning designations, you can see them laid on top of that map. The purple, dark purple, is industrial general, we've got some residential low-density yellow, and then our central commercial in red around here. So those are the base zones that are applied here, they have a specific set of requirements, you know, standards that are required, uses that are allowed, and so on and so forth. The Creamery District combining zone is an overlay. I'm going to try and use this overlay image where you have sort of a glass box, you can see through it, it's hovering above the underlying zoning, and it has specific characteristics that are associated with the Creamery District that are not shared by other industrial limited properties, even just across the street from the Creamery District combining zone. We actually have two, this is a nuance, not important for this discussion, but there are special characteristics in this zone versus this zone, both within the Creamery District combining zone. And you can see that the majority of parcels are light purple, industrial limited, but we even have a little bit of industrial general. And so the reason I point this out is because the overlay zone has collected this group of parcels, it's about a block away from the Creamery Building, and said, within this group of parcels, we want to have a special set of allowances, a special set of standards to really reflect what we see going on in this specific zone with this overlay zone. So that meets all the characteristics of a combining zone or an overlay zone. These combining zones are not new. We didn't just think of these for the purposes of the gateway area. In fact, we have, you know, about a dozen or so, and we've collected these combining zones around a whole host of different specific characteristics. You can see they range from, you know, one of the first there, Historic Landmark Combining Zone, which is intended to designate historic resources, to stream protection zones, mobile home parks. So there's a whole range of different characteristics that these combining zones would collect a series of parcels or portions of parcels around to give them those specific criteria that you would identify in the overlay zone. The underlying base zoning still applies for the most part, unless it's overridden by these combining zones. So what do the combining zones do? If we've, you know, got these special zones, what do we need them for? Generally speaking, they either add or subtract requirements or allowances within the base zone. Good example of that is Creamery District One we just looked at. It provides for a whole bunch of land uses that aren't allowed in the industrial limited zoning district, or a historic landmark combining zone, where maybe we have certain restrictions on the uses of those, or the ways that, you know, the design of those. And so they add or subtract requirements in that case. We may require special permits for a certain overlay zone. A good example of this is a planned development, or the coastal zone, which is an overlay zone in our zoning, where those have special permit processes that you have to go through in order to get approval for different land uses in those zones. They may provide specific design criteria. A good example of this is the Plaza Area Combining Zone, where we have, you know, recognition of the special design criteria that are on the plaza. And just to reiterate, the base zone requirements apply in these special combining zones, it's just, they stack on top of each other. The reason why we call them overlay is because you can lay them one on top of the other, on top of the other. And so you may have a parcel, for example, that has, you know, residential low-density zoning, but it's got a creek running through the backyard, so you've got a string protection combining zone laid on top of that. And maybe the house itself is a historic resource, so you combine it again, you put another overlay of a historic landmark combining zone on top of that. And so the idea is that you can stack these special zoning districts one on top of the Multiple combining zones may apply to a single parcel. And then, just to complicate it even further, multiple base zones may be combined within a single combining zone. You saw that in the Creamery District, where you had the underlying industrial limited zoning, but you also had underlying industrial general zoning that falls into that same category. So you're starting to see this grand Venn diagram in your head, so I'm sure. Okay, so let's talk specific, let's talk specifically about the gateway combining zone that the Planning Commission recommended and why they recommended it. This is going to, again, go through the characteristics of a geographical area, the gateway area, that has a special set of characteristics, the characteristics that we've been talking about for the last couple of years of trying to incentivize mixed-use, high-density high-density development with some, you know, really special characteristics, walkable, lots of alternate transportation, et cetera, in this specific zone. And we're collecting those all together with a special set of allowances and restrictions in that zone. Again, you see the Creamery Building surrounded in the yellow box, the Gateway combining zone, or the Gateway area outlined in dark black. This is an older version of it, for those of you who are astute saying, hey, that's not the current version, it's okay, for our purposes, the illustrative diagram works. And then you can see the properties, the actual, in fact, properties on the aerial image. The Planning Commission said, hey, look, the standard base zone that's most similar to the concepts that we've been talking about in the Gateway area is commercial mixed. So let's make commercial mixed, which is intended to provide for a range of different uses, commercial, residential, all of these different types of uses, and we have a whole body of policy that incentivizes high-density development in these commercial mixed use areas. Let's borrow from commercial mixed use in the Gateway area by applying that as a base zone, and all of those commercial mixed use standards apply in the Gateway area now. But we also know that we want to do some special zoning in the Gateway area, so we can apply the former Gateway designations, the Gateway Barrel, Hub, Corridor, and Neighborhood, with its corresponding maximum building heights shown on the map here, as overlay zones. And that way, the attributes of the overlay zone, the specific allowances, for example, seven stories allowed in the Barrel District, apply only in the Barrel District because of the Barrel District overlay zone. Doesn't apply more broadly to commercial mixed use, it applies only in the Barrel District because of the Barrel overlay zone. And so in this way, we've taken those special characteristics that we've been talking about, pulled them up off the ground, and created an overlay zone that stacks on top of the base commercial mixed use zoning district that's as similar as it gets to what we've been attempting to do in the Gateway area to begin with. So how do these combining zones work in the Gateway area? You know, it's well and good to think about these conceptually, but, you know, what's actually going to be applied here? This is a graphic, this is, I'm sure, the Venn diagram that you had in your minds just moments ago. This is a graphic from the Gateway Area Plan. The, and I'm not going to go into all of the details here, but I want to give you enough to have you understand the conceptual model that it's presenting here. The brownish outline, the biggest circle here, represents the entire city. So this is the graphical representation of the entire city. The blue line, blue hash line, shows the coastal zone boundary, a portion of our city is in the coastal zone, a portion of it is outside the coastal zone. And then the green circle is the Gateway area. A portion of the Gateway area is outside the coastal zone, and a portion is inside the coastal zone, and of course, the entirety of the Gateway area is inside the city. So that's the relationship of the Venn diagrams here. We have three bodies of policy that apply to these different areas, and they apply differently, and so this is where some of the confusion comes in. The general plan applies citywide, doesn't matter if you're in the coastal zone, doesn't matter if you're outside the coastal zone, doesn't matter if you're in the Gateway area, the general plan applies citywide. Now, there's more specificity about some policy in the Gateway Area Plan that applies in the Gateway Area Plan, and there's some more specificity about the local coastal program that only applies in the coastal program. So, general plan policies apply in the city outside of the local coastal program and outside the Gateway area, they apply inside the coastal zone, and they apply in the Gateway area, unless they're superseded by policies in the Gateway area. Gateway Area Plan only applies within the Gateway area. So the policies and programs inside the Gateway Area Plan, they apply in the coastal portions and in the non-coastal portions, but they only apply in the Gateway area, they don't apply in the city generally, and that's with the caveat that they apply in the coastal zone after an amendment is adopted. And the local coastal program only applies in the coastal zone, but it applies equally to the Gateway area portion that's in the coastal zone and to the portion that's in the city at large, outside of the Gateway area, as long as it's in the coastal zone. So that's how the policy documents that are regulating here correspond to the different areas within the city. And it's important to understand that because where the policies occur may affect how they're applied. And as you're well aware, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to move several policies out of the Gateway Area Plan and into the general plan so that they could apply more broadly to the city. But we also wanted to make sure that there were triggers and mechanisms to ensure that not all of the policies that were moved into the general plan applied to all of the properties throughout the city. And so that's the portion that I want to explain to you now, how that works. Here's an example of a policy that is a combination of the CM1B, this is the Circulation and Mobility Policy 1B, that was in the general plan to begin with, the black text, and then the red text, which was moved into the general plan from the Gateway Area Plan. Both of these have to do with complete streets, making access to all modes of transportation, and safe modes for all transportation throughout the city on all of our road networks. And specifically, what we were trying to do in the Gateway was take advantage of incomplete blocks and ensure that if those were developed as roads, that they would have complete streets, but also that they could be developed as non-motorized modes of transportation. We moved that language, finishing complete blocks with active transportation infrastructure, where the urban grid pattern is interrupted or incomplete, evaluate opportunities to continue the circulation block patterns with new connections that consist of entirely non-vehicular active transportation facilities. We took that concept and moved it into the general plan. So now, that could apply anywhere. The City Council can now approve a project anywhere in the city, whether it's in the coastal zone, outside the coastal zone, or in the Gateway area, that has the, you know, that implements this policy, that gives active transportation a priority, even if we're not building a road. That wouldn't have happened if that policy was only in the Gateway Area Plan, and that would not have happened if that policy was only in the local coastal program. Only the general plan has that overarching policy directive. So there's an example of a policy that was moved out of the Gateway Area Plan into the general plan and applies everywhere throughout the city, Gateway included. Here's an example of policies that were moved out of the Gateway Area Plan into the general plan, but currently, they only apply within the Gateway area. These are the policies that are related to the Community Benefits Program. I've selected a few here that talk about, you know, choice of benefits, the housing production emphasis, value of benefits. The specific policies here are examples, there are several in Section D8, the Design Elements, New Section Policy D8, where all of the community benefits, or the majority of the community benefits were moved to. Now, the reason why these community benefits only are triggered in the Gateway area is because currently, the Gateway area is the only policy document that references the Community Benefits Program, and it's the only area that has a zoning code that allows community benefits. So even though these policies are in the general plan, a policy document that applies citywide, that body of policy only applies in the Gateway area. Good example of this is, I see a question brewing.
Yes, sir. So, well, I think we're going to maybe answer with your example perhaps, but, so then, if down the line, there is a Community Benefits Program created for development of the, and now people are going to be like, ah, they're doing this, but whatever, the Westwood Shopping Center, or something, then would this overlay apply to that then specific zoning area?
That's exactly right. If the, in the future, the City Council decides, you know, in some of these other infill opportunity zones, to activate the Community Benefits Program to do similar streamlining within those areas, then having this policy in the general plan allows each of those specific area plans to point to that body of policy and say, now we're activating this policy. That's a very good observation. And I was going to use this opportunity to point out that there's a lot of policy that doesn't apply citywide that's in the general plan. The most basic is policy that regulates land use designations. And so, for example, the, there's a whole body of policy around agricultural properties that only applies to properties that have agricultural zoning applied to them, only have agricultural land use designations applied to them. So even though that policy is in the general plan, which applies citywide, there's a triggering mechanism to say, when that policy actually applies to a specific parcel on the ground, that triggering mechanism is zoning districts saying, this is an agricultural zone property.
To Sarah's question, does that include building heights?
It does, and thank you for that, I think that's the very, oh, it's two slides away. So here's another example of policy that was moved into the general plan from the Gateway Area Plan, this is now in the land use element. Land Use 3 talks about commercial properties, Land Use 1 talks about, you know, land uses in general, so here's a smattering of policies that talk about relationship of building height to open space and form-based design standards. These highlighted sections give you the indication about what the triggering mechanism is. So, relationship of building height to open space, allow for buildings over four stories using Community Benefits Program, but require greater percentages of open space and so on and so forth. So if you read this and you didn't understand that the triggering mechanism, that there has to be a Community Benefits Program established for the property that you're thinking about, you might think that this policy is saying that you can build over four stories anywhere throughout the city, now that this policy has moved into the general plan.
But does the density bonus supersede community benefits, though?
It does, but it's unrelated to where the policies land, and we can talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. No, not at all, no, this is a really good question. The density bonus applies regardless of the underlying zoning or the overlay zones, or where the policy is, because that's a state policy that supersedes our local. So these two policies currently only apply in the Gateway Area Plan because of those triggering mechanisms, despite the fact that these are general plan policies in the land use element. Again, they could be applied to other areas if those triggering mechanisms are created. And then as to the question about building height, I showed you the map earlier where the Gateway Barrel District had seven stories, the Hub has six, the Corridor five, and the Neighborhood districts have four. That's currently codified in this table, which is in the Gateway Area Plan, this is not in the general plan. And so here's an example of how the policies that are in the Gateway area only apply to the Gateway area. They don't apply citywide, and this is tying to the Barrel District, the Hub, the Corridor, and Neighborhood. This is not tying to commercial mixed use. So even though the Gateway area, the entire area is commercial mixed use, building over four stories is not allowed anywhere except in the Gateway area, because it's only authorized by the Gateway Area Plan. Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
And maybe it's redundant, and I apologize, it's getting late. If, could you put that back? Oh, I'm sorry, it's not on my screen. Oh, guess I could look there, I guess my glasses aren't that good. So the trigger, you said, for building heights is that you have to have a current community benefit program for that particular area of opportunity or neighborhood, correct?
You have to have some kind of triggering mechanism. Currently, in the Gateway Zone where you can build over four stories, it's this policy that points to this table, and it's the combination of those community benefits policies.
So what protection do individual neighborhoods have when we do these overlays, that there's not going to be seven or eight stories in the neighborhood?
The overlays are specific to the areas where they're applied. So if you applied the Gateway Barrel District overlay zone to an area outside of the Gateway area, it would take on the attributes of the Gateway Barrel District, and you'd be able to build seven stories. If you apply another zoning overlay in a different neighborhood, let's say you're working in one of the other infill opportunity zones, and you're working on a form-based code for that infill opportunity zone, it's up to that public process to determine the maximum building heights in that infill opportunity zone. Currently, the maximum building height for every other zoning district is four stories. Okay.
Just point of clarification on that then. So, yeah, it would be a similar planning process if we decide we want to, you know, do a Valley West area plan, and we, you know, create different overlay zones that are similar to talking about the Barrel, the Hub, the Neighborhood, right? And then those zoning standards would be applied to those zones, again, only in those zones because they are overlaid over the, whatever, commercial mixed use zoning of Valley West currently.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Did you get your question answered? Really?
Okay. Okay, so, how will combining zones work in the Gateway area continued? So here's the pop quiz. Do the Gateway Area Plan policies apply in the general plan, either inside or outside the coastal zone? No, so no, they don't. And then the trick question, do the general plan policies apply in the general plan everywhere, whether it's in the coastal zone or not? The answer to that is sometimes, right? Most of the time, I mean, it depends, there's some policy that's triggering for specific zones. So that's, it's important to understand that, though, because in the way that the agricultural policies don't apply to every single parcel, they only apply if there's an agricultural zone parcel. The Gateway Area Plan policies, building heights, all of the other, you know, parking requirements, et cetera, only apply because of the Gateway overlay zones, as they're currently envisioned. And so buildings over four stories, the minimum parking that's been attributed in the Gateway area, community benefits, the form-based code, the ministerial review, all of that is still only allowed in the Gateway area. But by moving the policy out of the Gateway Area Plan and into the general plan, other things like alternative transportation enhancements, vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas reductions, mixed use residential in some of our zoning districts, and all of the really cool green and gray infrastructure that's being planned for, those can now be applied citywide. The City Council can point to those policies and say, we want to do a project, you know, new green infrastructure project, and we're going to use that body of policy we just adopted in the general plan to do it. If we didn't move these policies into the general plan, you would only be able to do those kinds of projects, or, you know, prove those kinds of infrastructures in the areas where they were attributed, and in this case, it would be in the Gateway area only.
Could I get some point of clarification?
Sure.
Is there any reason why you couldn't move forward on that, even if there wasn't an overlay for that particular policy?
Yeah, generally speaking, your decisions have to be grounded in policy. Now, I'm not saying that there may not be another body of policy that we could navigate to, you know, to be able to do some of the work that we're talking about in the Gateway area, outside the Gateway area, if we hadn't moved these policies. But now they're explicit. Now, all of the planning work that we did, and there's a lot of really cool ideas that came out of this process in the Gateway area, now it's explicit in the general plan that those are allowed outside of the Gateway area and throughout the city.
So let me ask you that, so you would have to, there would have to be some policy that you would need to justify that, correct? And if you couldn't, then you couldn't do that, which means that it probably shouldn't have been in an overlay anyway, so does that make sense, what I'm trying to get to?
The overlays are different than the policies that were moved into the general plan, and so all of these alternative transportation, the vehicle mile travel, greenhouse gas, mixed use residential, green, gray infrastructure that I'm mentioning here, and this is just, you know, random selection of the different kinds of policies that were moved.
Those were of the 87 original policies that the Planning Commission went through one by one and decided to put those into the general plan, correct?
Yeah, and those policies don't tie specifically to the concept of an overlay zone, there's two separate things going on. If you're going to take all that policy and move it into a more general plan, to be able to point back to it, you need these overlay zones to trigger those. For the policy that we moved- For the policy that we moved into the general plan that is more general, is more broad, that we don't need a triggering mechanism for, that we want to apply citywide, uh, that body of policy has landed in the general plan, and now it can be applied outside of the Gateway Area and throughout the city.
What is the downside of not doing this overlay?
What is the downside of not doing this overlay? If we do not do the overlay, uh, and you go back to the, the base zoning, uh, if, if you create these overlay zones as base zoning, and they're separate from the rest of the zoning, you would basically have to duplicate all of the policy that you want to apply both in the Gateway Area and in other zones, in each of the different, uh, area plans that you would adopt. Uh, you'd have to, you'd have the same body of, uh, you know, standards and, and regulations that apply in one area iterated multiple times in the zoning ordinance to make it effective in other areas. The purpose of having a, a single zoning district, for example, if you have a residential low-density zoning district, and that's where you want, um, you know, single-family homes to be built, um, and you don't want, uh, four plexes, or six plexes, or eight plexes to be built in those areas, then it's easy to paint, you know, huge swaths of your city yellow for residential low-density, and then say that in this yellow district, you'd only build up to, you know, duplexes, or triplexes, or whatever. And so it's a, it's a, uh, uh, an efficient way of identifying the zoning, the types of policies that you're trying to implement in that particular area.
So then the downside of not doing is it would, it makes it easier.
It's...
But, but it's really not, it's still doable if, I mean, I just, for me, I want to treat each individual neighborhood as, as just that, an individual neighborhood with its own uniqueness, and I'm just wondering, can we put some protective language in there? So, for example, we all know each other and trust each other, and we're not going to go to some pro-developers so that they can make a ton of money over, uh, the, the neighborhood. But we don't know what a future council might, what their, you know, what, what they might be doing. So if we put protective language in there, not to throw any shade on any partic, you know, future council, but, but to put some protective language in there, because that's what zoning is all about, I thought, was to, to, it's land use and design specific for a, a particular neighborhood. So if we just do this blanket swath over everything, it just seems like it's defeating the purpose, and, and maybe...
Can I, can I ask a question and bring a point to that? Because, and, and maybe I'm seeing it in a different way, but, but in my mind, the overlay zone does seem like the protection in the sense that we're not just saying, "Hey, these policies are good to go," and all of a sudden you can build seven stories in Valley West. No, we're making this overlay zone to make it very specific to what region, areas of this plan we want to see, and as, you know, we, we go forward with these things like wanting to see form-based code and community benefits for development in other, um, you know, these opportunity zones in other areas of the city, that protection is already baked in, because you will need to then create and activate an overlay zone to be able to do any kind of zoning around building height, um, and, and building that into your form-based code. Does that, I see you nodding.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
That's, yeah. And so, so in a sense, then, the overlay zone protects then from all of those policies going citywide, while we get to see, you know, I think a lot of the policies that we wanted to see go from the Gateway into the general plan really were specific to, like you put up there, uh, complete streets, alternative transportation, um, you know, and, and mixed use, and, and seeing some of those different zoning types, while then having overlay zones to make it so it's not automatic that, you know, we're going to go four, or five, six, seven, whatever stories when we're looking at different areas of town. So...
Would this overlay zone then allow mixed commercial in every neighborhood across the board? Because, because I don't see that that's going to be beneficial.
No, 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 no. No, I'm sorry, maybe I, um, maybe I misspoke somewhere along the line. The overlay zones are 100% reflective of the design standards in the Gateway Area that we've been discussing for the Gateway Area.
But we did those specific for the Gateway Area Plan. When we did this, in my mind, I had no idea that we would be pivoting that and applying those same...
We are not pivoting. No, let me be clear, we're not pivoting. That, this map right here, this is the only place where you can build seven, six, and five-story buildings. The overlay zones make it such that this can happen only in this area. Oops, excuse me.
But that's building height. What about...
So it's only in the Gateway Area. So the star is in the Gateway Area, that's the only place where it can happen. That's what the overlay zones do.
So then how does that work with the commercial mix? Because that's building height, but what about commercial mix? What is to prevent having commercial mixed in all areas of opportunities and neighborhoods where it might not be in the best interest of that particular neighborhood?
The commercial mixed zoning district is limited to only the areas that have been identified in the land use map, so it's not every neighborhood citywide.
So it's not going to be, that's not part of the overlay at all?
No, no.
No?
Again, the overlays, there's two separate things. One is the policy change that happened, the other is the overlay zone. The overlay zone is specific to the Gateway Area, and all it does is activate these standards that we've identified that are still in the Gateway Area Plan or in the form-based code. It allows that to happen, and that's the only place where it can happen.
And, and just for me to kind of, you know, think, because we've talked about overlay zones, and, and, you know, imagine hearing overlay, you think it's over everything, you know? But I, I think this term combining zones is really helpful for conceptualizing it because, right, it's talking about taking this base zoning and combining it with new zoning and new standards for building. And I, I think thinking about it in the combining, rather than the, the blanketing, is, is more helpful, at least for my, my brain.
Yeah.
I liked that, that term. I feel like this is the first time I actually saw combining zones. I was like, "Oh, that makes actually much better sense as a, as a term to describe this." So...
So the nomenclature has changed, but it's basically the same. Combining zone is an overlay zone. My, okay, let me just put this forward, then. Someone, um, in our Planning Commission was concerned about the more layers that you have, um, within a planning and zoning, the less transparent, and, um, I guess my concern is that efficiency should not outweigh the nuances of an individual neighborhood, and I just want to make sure that that's not what we're giving up.
None at all. Um, no, the, um, I mean, the, the documents are still 100% transparent, the process is 100% transparent. Um, I don't see that trade-off at all. Um, I mean, we've been going through this in, in earnest, uh, for the last two years. The, you know, I, you know, am not sure where the transparency trade-off idea comes from. I know the Planning Commission did have some conversation. Commissioner Mayor in particular brought up the idea that in San Francisco, um, you know, every neighborhood has a separate zoning type. Um, you know, we're not San Francisco. Um, you know, I, I think that if you had, uh, you know, the neighborhoods as varied as San Francisco had, it might make more sense. If you had the budget San Francisco has, you, it might make more sense. But I think this works very well for our purposes, and it, um, it provides a, and this is the only way that I can think to operationalize the direction that the council provided us to move these policies into the general plan, um, and still have this function in the way that we intended it to function. Again, efficiently. There are other way less efficient things that we can do, um, to, to operationalize this. And I guess I would, now that I'm saying this, you know, I would offer that, you know, government processes in general are confusing and complex. Making them as efficient as possible, making them as streamlined as possible, is going to make them more transparent, more intelligible, more understandable to the common person. If, one of the biggest problems that we have right now with our coastal zone, for example, is there are technically completely different kinds of zoning districts with completely different standards on one side of the street from the other, even though you're both residential low-density, or you're both residential medium-density, that's confusing. Having multiple zoning districts, the more zoning districts you have, I think the more confusing it becomes.
Are you finished with your presentation? There's still more to go? I know that, sorry, this has been more of a conversation than a presentation. I just want...
That was it.
That was it? All right. I think that we've asked some pretty good questions during this presentation. Is everybody cool if we take it out to public comment and then circle back? Let's, let's...
And I just want to say thank you, David, because I feel a lot more clear just on terminology and, you know, things that I was like, "What, what does that mean?" And I was like, "Oh, I do know what that means." So thank you for, you know, setting it up that way and making it clear.
All right. Just want to be clear, while we're going to public comment, this is public comment on overlay zones in the Gateway Area District. So...
This is about...
We're still on our agenda, and we honestly have a lot more ways to go. Thank you, guys.
Overlay zones in the Gateway Area.
All right. I'm Howie Emerson, and, um, what a dizzying array of overlays and regulations. I'm concerned for an individual homeowner, especially somebody when one property has three zones stacked on top of it, and the next one might only have two or three, and it's going to be just a hodgepodge. The individual homeowners or small businesses are just, I think it's going to discourage individual homeownership, and I'll defer the rest of my time to the gentleman behind me.
Your time is gone, so...
Modern city environments are literally made from the dead carcass of our once-living planet. It has been scientifically proven that life naturally adapts to its environment, so it must be questioned, how are these modern city environments impacting the natural adaptation of inhabiting organisms? Research from the New York Department of Environmental Conservation has indicated that modern city environments damages the immune systems, increases blood pressure, increases stress, decreases mood, decreases ability to focus, slows recovery from surgery or injury, decreases energy, and debilitates sleep. Scientifically speaking, the current Gateway Plan is extremely harmful and detrimental to the natural evolutionary development of the planetary biosphere. According to the E equals M C squared equation, the evolutionary development of an environment can be determined as a change in biomass equated to change in biochemical energy production divided by the speed of light squared. In other words, the biosphere is a living, growing organism that is accumulating mass through the convergence of energy into, from the sun into biomass resources through the process of photosynthesis. Modern city environments obstruct the natural evolutionary development of the planet by hindering natural resource productions of the realty, uh, of the envi, uh, realty area spaces due to non-organic environments incapable of storing and processing energy convergence from the sun into the accumulation of biomass resources processed into ecological productions. Within modern city environments, our environment no longer grows of its own accord, by its own design, in its own time. The environment in which we live has been totally reconstructed solely by human intentions and creations. We go through life believing we are experiencing the world when actually our experiences are confined within entirely human conceptions. Our world has been thought of, our environment itself, as a manifestation of the mental processes of other humans. All of the species of the planet and all of the cultures of humanity, we 20th century human, uh, Americans, have become the first in history to live predominantly inside projections of our own mind. Our environment itself becomes an editor, filter, and medium between ourselves and an art, and an alternative, non-human, unedited, organic planetary reality. Living within artificial, reconstructed, arbitrary environments are strict, that are strictly the products of human conception, we have no way to be sure of what is real and what is not. We have lost context and perspective. What we know is what other humans tell us. Therefore, whoever controls the process of recreation effectively redefines reality for everyone else and creates the entire world of human experience, our field of knowledge. We become subject to them. The confinement of our experience becomes the basis of their control of us. The White House has acknowledged that natives built some of the most enduring and advanced civilizations on earth, and that many hundreds of Indian tribes lived sustainably on the lands for millennia. They emphasize that tribal nations are the original stewards of these lands and waters and have been the most effective managers and protectors of biodiversity since time immemorial. Executive Order 14072 was implemented for strengthening the nation's forests, community, and local economies. It has been specified that permitting teams should aim to accelerate the permitting process for projects that use nature-based solutions. They emphasize that policies and processes can unintentionally promote conventional solutions over nature-based solutions. Nations across the world have now implemented the 30 by 30 Plan for conserving at least 30% of lands and waters by 2030. The state of California has personally adopted this policy. Arcata needs to incorporate genuine initiatives by our state and nation into its Gateway Plan. To make the sentiments for fruition of a better future true, the Gateway Plan must use, must be used to give the 106 acres of proposed land back to the Wiat tribe for the purpose of eco-city development under the guidance and stewardship of the tribes. Arcata's presence within this ancient land has so far been the most destructive and malevolent influence to ever emerge within these hollow grounds. The only things that have been made clear through all this time is that the city of Arcata has no idea what it's doing, and has been experimenting around with things they do not understand at the expense of all life on the planet. We have already seen the devastating impacts of carelessness of bringing in more people when the needs of the existing inhabitants are unattended to. The transference of H S U into Cal Poly Humboldt has only exacerbated its huge homelessness issues amongst the student population, placing more students into ever even greater danger and inhumane environmental conditions, while the school continues to only focus on bringing in more students for ever greater profits at the expense of human life. Now, the city of Arcata has planned to do the exact same thing on much larger scales with this current Gateway Initiative. Local Arcata residents are starving with the hike of food prices, gas prices, housing prices, and an unending inflation that lift, if left unaddressed, will completely wipe out the entirety of our nation. Tend to the needs of the people already here before trying to bring in more people that will only exacerbate existing issues. Instead of trying to bring in more foreign invaders to this region, give the 106 acres of industrial area back to the native tribe of this region, so they may integrate themselves harmoniously into the modern world and the Arcata community and reimplement tribal stewardship techniques to restore old growth conditions within the environment.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't, you know, part of this is the E I R. Ed, you failed miserably on this area, specifically the noise study that you were going to do. Um, this is a conversation that I had with David early on, that this was going to be done, and I was pretty specific, like, "You're going to go after these primary streets, not just the Gateway, and do this study." And, you know, he tried to little weasel at it a little bit, but he said, "It wouldn't be my decision, it has to do with Plan West." So I, I go over to Plan West and, and have a conversation with them, and they say, "It's, it's all on the city, the city, we do what the city wants." So guess what? You didn't do the noise study, so you get a failing grade there. This, you, but you have not been in compliance for two years on this, and I brought this up, I've gone to the police, I've gone to the council, and I'll have to say, "I specifically got a letter from the council two years ago saying they agreed with me 100% on this, that they understood where I was coming from, that you weren't, you weren't in compliance with the laws." So now, with this particular incident here, David uses that, "Well, just use the noise standard, those are the guidelines." Well, you have, you have been not in, in the, within the guidelines for the last two years. So I guess this is all just a bunch of nonsense, because when it comes to the laws of the state of California, you don't want to, you don't want to enforce the laws. I mean, that's basically what it is. And it's interesting, in this Gateway proposal, that, what, what is your way of dealing with the, with the noise? It's like, you're going to have everybody have air conditioning, so they don't have to open up their windows. That, that's actually in this report right here. So David is not somebody you can trust in this particular area. He's, he's got his agenda, and he will do, say, whatever to get, get it through, but he has been a failure completely with his noise ordinance. Now, I'm not going to specifically blame you guys from the beginning, from when my particular project came up through here, but we, there's a lot of houses that, on the streets going into there, that are single-pane windows. Specifically, the city of Arcata requires us to restore our, our 107, 146-year-old windows, and, and that's, that's their standard, you know? And it's like, you don't even, you don't even want to do the S D, SB 2000s with environmental injustice. You're, you're bunting on that one, too, because you know what? Because there's, there's specific laws, the Secretary of State has specifically about that, and you, you're trying to, like, get out of that one, too. So get, guess what? You are a total failure, you're not some, you're not an organization to be trusted. You're, you're failed miserably in this area, and, you know, there's going to be consequences. I have the letter, I'll go to the state, I'll go to the federal government. It's time to, like, cut your funding, and then we'll go from there.
Thanks for your comments.
I'm Fred Wise. The, I'm not opposed to the overlay, but I don't think it's been proven that this is the way to go. I'll outline some questions. For starters, the Community Development Director keeps saying that the Planning Commission recommended to move several, the word is several, of the Gateway policies, the general plan. I would like the council to ask them to not use that word. There are 87 policies moved. It was the vast majority. I'm not against it, but I'm against the use of the word "several." In the overlay system, it makes it easier to change zoning, as I was explaining, or density or height, and as Councilmember White brought up, that might not be a good idea. I'll bring up the Plan Development Combining Zone, which was mentioned. This, a Plan Development Combining Zone was set up for the Arcata Westwood Gardens apartments. They were completely ignored by a future city council. The, the requirements for a Plan Development were in writing. It had to be held to a higher standard. It had to have mixed-sized units, which, as you know, do not occur. So, there is an example of a future council ignoring the actions of a past council. What I think would help is if the director could go through a real-life example, such as if Valley West were made into an overlay zone, you know, the opportunity infill zone of Valley West. It would need a form-based code, a community benefits program, all these things. The question is, would this be done at a planning commission level? Would it be done at a council level? Would it require a CEQA, environmental review? If I go through the step-by-step, I think we'd understand the process a lot better and what the advantages and disadvantages are. I propose that it might only be marginally less efficient to have this overlay process. You know, the code would be duplicated if we didn't have it, as, as the director said, but that might not be a bad thing, because it would require the commission and the council to go through the policies. In terms of the idea that the, what's in the Gateway code or plan now that would go into the Gateway overlay, as has been said, it does not now, the things that are in there do not now apply citywide. That is true, but we want those things to apply in various places. The other example we might try in addition to the Valley West is what would happen in the Bayview area, which has an implementation measure to be rezoned residential high density? What would that, what would it entail to put an overlay zone on there? So, those are the two scenarios we walk through in just, you know, 10 minutes and give us an idea of what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Joanne McGary, and I've been following this, but not as intensely as many of the other speakers have. And I do live currently in the Gateway area and in the Creamery District, actually, and I, by the end of May, will have to find a new place to live. And with a lot of what is being discussed here about high-rise construction for people to live in, it's something that I personally will find really unhealthy for me. Gregory brought up some points about air conditioning and closed windows. Farid brought up really important issues about the unhealthy aspect of urbanization in modern, the modern world. What has also been discussed at other times is the concept of maybe considering returning the name of our community from Arcata back to Gudini, and that kind of might segue into a land-back concept. And I really do think that the future is, it cannot be the same as what's been ongoing. We sometimes have to look greatly to the past. And, and when I lived in Santa Barbara, they couldn't build anything higher than the courthouse in the downtown Santa Barbara area. And I kind of think that we really need to lower our expectations of height in our development plans for the future and that really recognizing that we live in redwood country, and those trees should be the only real tall things that exist. And so, this zoning overlays, you know, it's been so, ongoing for so long with the Gateway. I kind of feel like it's the first time I'm seeing a lot of this overlay-type stuff, and it just is, the visuals are so important to me. And anyway, I just think that we just need to pause and really reflect on who we are and where we are and how we want to live where we are.
Thank you. Any more in-person comments? Let's go down to Zoom.
Okay. I am seeing no public comment on this item. No.
All right. David, what, what do you need from us this evening, specifically about overlay zones? Do you need direction? Do, is this, or...
If you want us to go in a different direction, then I'd say, yeah, definitely let us know what that is. If you think we're on track, then, you know, consider this informational. This is what's currently in the document. This is what the EIR is evaluating, and this is what your, your planning commission will be reviewing for a recommendation to you in early spring and what will be before you for adoption by May, June.
All right. I am comfortable with this. That was a very informative presentation. I, I think seeing that and hearing about combining zones and overlay zones really, like, cemented it in my mind, so, yeah.
Could I ask a question? So, yes, thank you for that presentation. It also helped me a lot. I'm a visual person, so that works. On page 139, right before we get into the housing, it says, "The city council could choose which of these planning principles and policies to apply in other areas after going through engagement, outreach, and a separate CEQA process in those other areas. It is highly likely that some of these policies will apply in other infill opportunity zones in the future, but those decisions will be made independently." I would love that direction.
Yeah. I mean, you could make that direction if you like. That is, I mean, it has to happen that way. We haven't considered anything...
Because of...
Yeah. The reason why we put this in here, this statement, is because there was some concern. Again, I tried to hit different angles to, to identify that this decision doesn't apply anywhere else. If there's anything I want people to go home and think about tonight, or the folks that are already at home to, to, you know, consider, is that the, the decisions that are being made in the Gateway only apply in the Gateway. They don't apply anywhere else. We've been talking about these infill opportunity zones that are going to have, you know, potentially high-density, other areas to evaluate. That evaluation will happen later. There's going to be a separate public process that we could go through, separate council decisions, separate environmental analysis. None of that is being decided right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? I just want to clarify, we have closed public comment, correct? We have a hand that has come up after someone...
Yeah, we've already closed public comment on overlay zones. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we in agreement that, that we're good to move on?
Yeah.
All right. Let us bring back Councilmember Stillman and Councilmember Atkins Alzar and have a conversation on homeownership. Welcome back. This section is on homeownership, and we are talking about the general plan as a whole. And Community Development Director Lawyer, can we have a staff report?
Yeah, I'm going to be really brief on this. I feel like Deputy Director Dart, who put this portion of the presentation together, did a really good job of outlining all of the programs that we have currently and/or proposed to help support homeownership. We also gave a presentation, this exact same presentation, on January 23rd to the Planning Commission, which I believe many of you have watched that, and the public can go back and watch that as well. The high-level bullet points that I want you to, to understand with this material is that we can't regulate homeownership. We cannot require homeownership, even where we may require the form that could potentially be a separately sold unit, like, single-family unit, or if we were to say, "Look, the only thing you can build is a condo. You have to build condos," so that they could be sold individually. We still can't regulate what the ultimate fate of that unit is. That unit may get rented, and we've seen a lot of this in our community, where brand-new builds of single-family homes have become rentals. The nice thing about having new builds that are, you know, condoized or townhouses or somehow separated like that is that even if they're not sold under their first use, they're still in a form that could be sold, but we can't regulate that. The second thing I want you to take home is that we have a lot of policy. We've done a lot of policy in spite of the fact that we can't regulate it. We've done a lot of policy to incentivize the development of homeownership opportunities. And then, really, where we've gotten the largest bang for our buck is through our homeownership program, where we assist low-income households to purchase a home in Arcata, through our Community Land Trust program, where we've done similar work, and then we've talked about a moderate-income homeownership program, Down Payment Assistance Program with the council previously as well. And so, those would be a couple of programs that we'll be able to bring on that, where we participate in the creation of homeownership opportunities. And so, you know, the, the city's regulatory authority is, is strong and vast, but it still has its limits. We need to do other things like these programs if, where we want to see as more homeownership. So, I'll leave it at that and leave it to any questions that you have, you know, about the written staff report or anything that I've said.
Yeah, thank you. And I know that one thing that Karen said at State of the City is that we're always looking for creative ideas that people have that would encourage homeownership. So, anybody has any ideas on how, you know, we can encourage that? We are absolutely open to hearing them, but right now, I'll ask the council if they have any comments or questions, and then I'll take it out to public comment.
I was just wondering if we could add to the conversation. We had talked about Elizabeth Connor came to REDEC and did a presentation on the benefits and challenges of regional housing trust funds and looking at that to see if that is something we might be interested in as a jurisdiction.
Yeah, we've been monitoring the Regional Housing Trust Fund, and I think it's, you know, it's a very interesting concept that has, you know, a lot of potential. And so, you know, we're excited to, you know, continue to participate and collaborate where we can. I think a lot of the conversations that are coming around about Regional Housing Trust Fund, you know, are, you know, I'm enthusiastic about the potential for those. Currently, it's not, you know, fully up and running and operational.
It'd probably be good, I mean, Elizabeth has been working on it for quite some time. It'd be good to see how it fares elsewhere, and then we could adopt it later, just like we did with the redevelopment agency. Eureka did really well with it, and then Arcata finally adopted it, and then, of course, it all went away. But I'm thinking, I'm hoping that we'll see some developers in our community that really want to be able to put their projects together as condominiums, whether or not they can sell them as condominiums or if they just rent them, but there'll be an opportunity. We have a developer that's down in Fortuna, and what he's building right now is condominiums. He doesn't know if he'll be able to sell them or not, but he has that opportunity. And I understand we have another, I just didn't realize this, but we have another project in Arcata that has the overlay on it, that it could be condominiums. There's only six of them, but they have the air, air, whatever condominium thing. So, I think there's ways that people could do things and maybe eventually that we'll be able to find buyers for them or however it might work. So, I look forward to seeing that kind of a process.
Yeah, that was an airspace subdivision.
That's what it is. So, we, we have one of those for six units in Arcata. I had no idea, but yes.
But just to, on the negative part of what you said about, "There's only so much that we can control." And unfortunately, when there are houses that, there was one in my neighborhood, and everybody wanted to rally to try to be able to help, like, one of our kids or somebody get it, and it went over and above a really ridiculously high price to somebody from out of the area as a second home, and they're renting it, and there was, you know, it was just, we all, everybody wanted to try to make it work for somebody, somebody in the neighborhood, but we couldn't. And so, there are just things like that that are really out of our control. So, even though homes or condos or things are being built, sometimes the people in our area aren't able to get them.
Yeah. The, the one nice thing about the inclusionary zoning policy that you have directed us to, to include in this body of policy is that when you have a new project that's built, at least those inclusionary units are going to have to be sold for, you know, owner occupancy.
The only comment that I'll, I'll add and just, you know, related the staff report and then going off what Kimberly said, to really just, in our minds as a, as a city, as a council, look for those opportunities to, to build up, you know, the land trust lands that we already have, continue those opportunities, you know, for first-time home buyers to be able to, to get in those programs. And I know it's, it's even harder now because the prices are so expensive, and even, you know, people that could afford to buy those houses aren't in the right income bracket, so it's, it's becoming increasingly more difficult. But to really, you know, look for ways to develop this idea of community land trust and to be able to have more properties, more land in, you know, community or organizational ownership, so that a lot more folks have that opportunity to be able to, to benefit and to build equity and to, you know, participate in that. So, that, that's the only direction, per se, that I would want to see, but to continue to pursue those opportunities, it's so important.
All right. All right. We're going to, yeah, we're going to open it up to public comment. And this is on housing, homeownership in the general plan, and I, you know, we've got two more agenda items before we open it up to general public comment. So, I'm going to really ask that if you're making public comment, really be specific about homeownership in, on the general plan. Let's, let's keep it really specific so we can get on to the last two agenda items and then open it up for the public comment, that there have been so many people waiting to make. So, homeownership in the general plan, if you have comments on that, please line up. Thank you.
Could I just ask if we could put cooperative housing in this list as just part of the conversation? Is it too late?
We can come back to us after this, but let's just get through public.
Hey, um, yeah, I noticed you're talking about creativity with housing. I gave you my Eco-City designs last time for turning Arcata into a festival Eco-City. You said you would get back to me. Haven't heard back from anyone yet. Inside of those designs are the tree-building technologies that I created that can create redwood skyscrapers by fusing redwood trees together. This will completely revolutionize the modern realty industry and can turn the quality of housing in Arcata to one equating to a supercity such as New York while keeping the pricing for housing down, while also creating a symbiotic relationship between the expansion of modern city development and the reforestization of old growth conditions within the wild ecosystems. To refresh memory and for people that may not have been there last time, the redwood trees naturally fuse together when they grow closely next to each other, so they can be strategically planted to create the exterior walls for building structures. Multiple layers of redwood trees, at least three to five layers, can be grown by, on side of each other to create extra-thick walls, and the interior layers can have the tree heads redirected to grow diagonally inward to create roofing structures and horizontally back outward to create additional floor levels, then merging vertically back into the original structure. The emergence of electroculture and magnetoculture technology has the capacity to increase the health and growth of living trees by up to 400%, enabling the redwood trees to grow up to 12 feet per year, making them able to grow fast enough for modern realty development. After the initial floor levels are developed in these kinds of building infrastructures, they can establish a new floor level of realty area space in about every five years, depending on the diameter of the building infrastructure. In addition to being able to operate as superior structures and being able to create natural skyscrapers that can be passed down to the future generations, it's also biologically healthier environments for people to live in. Redwood trees themselves, since they're alive, they're taking in carbon dioxide from the environment and releasing fresh oxygen, making them biologically healthier for the longevity of inhabiting organisms. Because the trees are alive, they're able to assist with carbon sequestration, and these kinds of... these kinds of building infrastructures can reverse the devastating effects and harmful impacts of climate change. This is really the best kind of design out here right now. It achieves all of Washington DC's current agendas for the National Nature Assessment and the Invest in Nature Call to Action, and it's something to be taken into consideration. I don't know if it will because, you know, it's kind of been disturbing just talking here with y'all so far because it seems like you don't even acknowledge the public comments. You know, it seems like you're just with your little crew and your friends. But it'd be nice for the public to actually have a say in our community instead of it just being you all having to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, good evening. As we know, homeownership is a difficult situation everywhere, and we do what we can do. I congratulate the city for everything that the city has done in the past, helped a lot of individuals with homeownership, and I'm sure that will continue. And as Mayor said, we need new techniques and to think outside the box. The, it said that we can't regulate homeownership, but we can have stronger benefits. Right now, the community benefit is two points, there's three points total. So there's two points for projects that have more than 50% condos. I propose, how about raising it to three points for even 25% condos? A four-story building would have one floor of condos, they'd get three points. No, just get it up the ante a bit, get it to the maximum, or at least have that discussion. There's a line that says the anticipated increase in the supply is likely to increase homeownership opportunities. I don't think so. At the start of the Gateway Conversation, we thought we were going to have more condos. We talked about the possibility of older people who weren't interested in, who live in single-family homes now, who are less interested in maintenance and that sort of thing, would be interested in condominiums. Now it doesn't look like there's going to be condominiums. I think older people are not inclined to trade their single-family home for a rental because of the uncertainty of living in a rental. There's also been a notion that's expressed by the director and by the chair, commission chair, that as apartments are built in the Gateway Area, people who are currently renting in single-family homes will want to move to a newly-built apartment because it's cleaner. I disagree. I don't think a person's going to want to trade in a house that has a yard, a garage, can have pets for an apartment. I think that there will be other reasons that single-family homeless will be available, but that will not be one of them. I also feel that in the conversation, there needs to be distinction between homeownership at a high price and homeownership at an affordable price. We're really looking for homeownership, ways that we can provide homeownership and help people, whether it's with land trusts, down payments, shared equity, all the different things that have been used and will be used. But in terms of regulating it, it seems pretty unlikely. So I'm not here to condemn anyone, just that we all agree it's a difficult situation. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
If you're going to be successful in homeownership, you need to have jobs, and unfortunately, there is not a plan for where people are going to work in this area. And I'm not talking about, I know you have like mixed use where you have some businesses below, but you know, those jobs are not going to be paying that high of a wage. You know, we've already seen this with just the closing of the restaurant here on the Plaza, that the problem isn't just housing, these people have a place to live, they don't have a job to pay their rent, and they're, and some of them, we reported lately that they're thinking about going back to their parents' house. So there is no, there is no plan for, you know, where, I can't understand this because I could see a lot of other cities that somehow they attract, you know, whether it's tech companies or light manufacturing where they're going to be good blue-collar jobs or white-collar jobs so that people can afford to buy a house. Because even if you build it, they're not going to be able to afford it. I mean, not the ones in, probably in Humboldt County anyway, maybe some people that are from the outside. And I'll have to say for homeownership from the standpoint of mid-rises or high-rises, you know, I've lived in Miami for a long, for a while, and, you know, I see how successful billions that are invested in hundreds of mid-rises and high-rises, and I kind of have an idea what people want that, you know, are going to have the money. And like Fred said, he didn't think that somebody from a single-family house was going to trade it in. Because you know why? The way that you've got it planned here is that you're not going to give them any parking. These people in Miami that are paying for these units, they want, doesn't matter what their views on anything, you know, they want to park, and a lot of them are elderly too, or even the young ones, they want to park under the building, they want to use an elevator to get up to their apartment, to bring their groceries in, you know, to deal with their kids, to take them to school. And there's this, somehow this plan for homeownership is that there's not going to be any jobs and somehow people aren't going to have cars. Well, you know, I guess, I guess you're setting it up for they're going to go traveling someplace else to another city for a job, because you don't even, you don't even have a place for them to work. I mean, not everybody can work at Cal Poly. They sort of, even with the half a billion-dollar, you know, investment there, there's hardly, there's hardly any jobs that are going to be created, maybe like another 50. So you don't really have a clear understanding of infill, of what successful projects. I mean, there's been a lot of information in the New York Times on this as far as like what a successful plan is, they go to an architect, they identify different sites, you see the actual, what a building in correspondence to that area would look like for a single-family houses or mid-rises, and, you know, I don't see that happening here.
Thank you for your comment. Last call for in-person public comment on housing, homeownership in the Gateway. No, Jeanette, do we have anybody online?
Yes, we do. Shoshana, do you want to go ahead, please?
Hello. I just wanted to say that I think the type of a program that leads to the first-time homebuyer programs the City of Arcata have had is spectacular, and I am very delighted and proud to be a participant in that program, and it really provides a way for homeownership that would not otherwise be possible. And, yeah, just thank you for programs such as that, and thanks to the Community Development Department for making those happen and helping create opportunities. It's not an easy process, but it's very cool. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Shoshana.
Okay, checking one last time for further public comment online, and seeing none.
All right, I'll close public comment on that. Is everybody okay? Checking in with you? All right, we're going to move on to new business.
Well, Kimberly mentioned.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So I was just going to mention, maybe the three Cs. We could look at cohousing, cooperative housing, condominiums, and then, I don't know how you put apartments in a C, but anyhow, because those are all things that we need, and I know people are interested in cohousing. We have cooperative housing in Arcata now, we could have more in condominiums.
I like the three Cs.
Three Cs and an A, okay. I did want to report back that our Housing Element Policy, HE1, does include condominium, community land trusts, cooperative and cohousing. So there's your four Cs.
All right, new business. All right, A, and new, is everybody finished with housing before? Okay, cheers, thanks. All right. A point, up to two new members to the Parks and Recreation Committee for terms expiring March 31st, 2025 and 2026. Do we have any questions from the council? We got some great, great potential candidates. Let's, before we make any motions or anything, anybody in public want to make any comments on the Parks and Recreation Committee? Anybody online?
I don't see anyone running up to the podium, so I would like to move that we appoint to Parks and Recreation Stephanie Lane and Pedro Peloso.
I'll second. Years, wait, we need years, ones for 2025 and ones for 2026.
Oh, I'm sorry, my hand was covering that over. So, well, let's do.
Do you want someone that was at the interviews to make that call, maybe?
I don't know which way you want to go.
Yeah, here, well, Stephanie really has like a long history of being involved in committees and seems to really love it, so let's give her the longer term, March 31st, 2026, and appoint Pedro Peloso to the term ending March 31st, 2025.
Since Stephanie was involved in Eureka on their committee.
That's true. All right, that was a motion to have a second.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm super thrilled that we have two really great candidates, and there are other committees that need committee members, so keep that in mind as you go about your day. All right, here we go. Item B, introduce ordinance number 1567 to make minor and non-substantive corrections, updates, and clarification to the Arcata Municipal Code. Can City Clerk give us a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Bridget Dory, your City Clerk. The item before you is to consider introducing ordinance number 1567, making minor and non-substantive corrections, updates, and clarifications to the Arcata Municipal Code. Non-substantive oversights that are more than minor clerical errors occasionally occur as an ordinance is adopted and codified into the code. Additionally, structural or legal changes occur that may be updated throughout the code, all of which accumulate over time, I'm sorry, may not be updated in the code, all of which accumulate over time. Periodically, cities comb through their codes to identify corrections that need to be made and make these corrections through an omnibus ordinance. Ordinance number 1567 makes corrections or changes in the code to staff position titles, departmental references, and terminology errors. Most importantly, there are currently two chapters in the code which bear the same codification numbers and cause, and is a cause for confusion, and the ordinance corrects this error. I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I would say thank you for finding them.
Anybody have any public comment on non-substantive corrections, updates, and clarification to the Arcata Municipal Code?
I'm hoping that such a document is available in hard copy at the library or elsewhere that's easily accessible.
Which, you mean the municipal code?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks. The library has some things and doesn't have other things, but that's good to know.
They have a code, yes.
Any other, anybody online want to make comments?
No, no online comments.
So I'd like to make a recommendation to introduce ordinance number 1567, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code to make minor and non-substantive corrections, updates, and clarifications, waive the reading of the text, and consent to read by title only.
Okay. All right, we have got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right. This brings us to oral and written communications. The city appreciates your public input, and I also really appreciate everybody wading through some very fascinating and important conversations that is basically the work of getting, that the city is doing, so thank you for staying for that. Now it's time, this time is provided, for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements, supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for future addendums or referred to for staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes, and if you are in person and waiting to give a public comment, please, please line up. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. You've got three minutes, and let's keep it respectful for the speakers tonight. Please, thank you so much, and let's get started.
Okay, thank you. This is regarding a potential ceasefire resolution. I, it's a terrible idea for reasons, I'll summarize. I did send you another letter. I think that the City Council has much more important things to do that are really concerned with local issues, and there are plenty. So the most important thing that I want to say, I'll say at the beginning, we don't understand why the massacre on October 7th triggered a worldwide explosion in antisemitism. I hear it, I see it, and it's terrible. Similarly, it is fact that city councils who have passed ceasefire resolutions have had the result of Jews being loudly bullied and harassed and screamed at in those chambers and beyond. I've seen the videos. It's fact that Hamas has rejected any and all calls for even a pause in fighting, and that Hamas deals all the aid, dozens of trucks every single day, assisted by UNRWA. It is a fact that Hamas, an internationally-recognized terror group, hides in tunnels while refusing shelter for women and children, preferring to use them as human shields to gain sympathy from the world. And it's working. Why?
You will have your chance. Please, I'm going to pause you, thank you. You will have your chance to speak, thank you.
These babies and children are being used for propaganda purposes against Israel. So regardless of how many city councils make the unwise decision to comment on a conflict in the Mid East, you cannot and I cannot possibly understand the intricacies of a war in which Hamas stole billions of dollars in international aid to build an underground military city whose functions are to imprison hostages, women, children, indeed babies, who are still I deplore the violence foisted upon Israelis and Palestinians. I see my time is up. But I implore you, please don't join the crowd in putting out a ceasefire resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commenter. And I will just reiterate that I will tolerate no outbursts unless it is your time to speak. Thank you so much for respecting everybody's time to public comment.
Hello, Howdy Emerson again, and I'm speaking to the resolution for a ceasefire and for letting aid in and the prisoner exchange, and, yeah, the simplified version. I'm going to read from a letter that I wrote, it was on January 18th in the Time Standard, called Silence is Complicity. The genocide of the Palestinian people in Gaza, the West Bank, and East Jerusalem must stop now. We can make that happen if we pressure our leaders to do so. That's you. Biden could end it with a simple call to Netanyahu, but he hasn't the courage. Now I'm going to speak to my fellow Christians. Will you be one of the ones whom history will say, where were they when the Christians in the land of Jesus' birth were being bombed by American-made bombs dropped from Israeli planes even on Christmas? Why were you silent when your Christian brothers and sisters in the Holy Land were being driven from their homes or bleeding and dying under rubble? Worse yet, why were some of you actively supporting Israel in the killing of 14,000 children in the concentration camp known as Gaza? Now I'll speak to you and everybody else. You have a chance to make a difference. Don't be one of the silent ones, especially if any of you up there are mothers. Put your child in a Palestinian child's shoes. You've known nothing but war, famine, and other outrages. And I'll say this, if you are not outraged by 14,000 children being killed, maybe you should check your humanity. You have a chance to make a difference here. I encourage you to do it.
Thank you for your comment.
We have all the council members back in the chamber, so this is the last time I'm going to talk about this, and then I'm done with it, and it'll be in somebody else's hands. But I, from two years ago, brought up the, it's a number of cars that have basically, you know, made their cars as loud as possible, you know, all hours of the day. They set off car alarms, they're so loud. It's like, so this has been going on for two years. I did receive from you guys two years ago, you were on my side, but you weren't going to do anything about it, but give us some more time, we're going to, we're going to get some more police, and we're going to, we're going to redirect it, and we're going to take care of this. And one of you did come to my house, and I'm not going to name the person, but on the council. the council, and asked specifically for more time, we're hiring more police. So I patiently waited, and there has been absolutely no change at all. So I'm a little disappointed about that. We had a new chief that came up and basically said, you know, we've got a lot more people that we've hired, and I believe that you've hired them because alls it takes is for Hollywood to come down and have Leonardo running around and you see how many police all of a sudden we have, but never, never around for taking care of the problem that I'm addressing in two years, never around for when we had people that are speeding through our streets, and there's no, there's actually no, people aren't worried about it at all. They'll just do whatever they want because there's no consequences at all. And, you know, there are people that are paying attention here out in the public, and they're coming up with some pretty interesting scenarios of why you guys aren't getting on board on this, because it's a pretty easy thing to do. Alls you have to do is tell whether it's the city manager, or whether it's the police that you're on board, you want these problems taken care of. That's all you got to do. But in two years, you have been absolutely not capable of doing that. You know, it's like you swore an oath to uphold the laws of the state of California. You are blatantly not doing that, and I'm just so shocked that you haven't taken the easy route and just resolved. I mean, I'm not expecting the city council to solve it, I'm expecting the people that work in the city to take care of it. I'm just expecting that you guys to actually do what you raised your right hand to do, was to swear an oath to uphold the laws. So it's kind of a lot of nonsense from the standpoint, oh, we're having some bicycle lanes and everything, when there's no, there's no actually consequences. And that's the article that I, I sent to you that you never received, that basically, it's a fact, it's, it's the problem. It's, it's cars, it's nobody's like consequences and a lot of other things, but it was like worthless to send it to you because it doesn't make any difference.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, staff and council, the earlier biomass discussion kind of goes hand in hand with the rooftop solar discussion. I think in the big picture, some of, it'll be little bits and pieces that help us hopefully move to better sources of energy. And I was just wondering, in the new developments, I know a lot of them will probably involve solar being included in the projects, and I'm just wondering either through possible requirements or incentive base if battery storage will be involved. We decided to make the investment, it's pretty long-term, and put 4.5 kilowatts on our house and a 13.4 kilowatt battery, and just even in a short sunny day in February, you're getting like 20 kilowatts. So it's helpful for both our house and it goes back into the system. You know, rooftop solar, though, is susceptible to shading. This is why siding setbacks, step backs is so important to honor. By day, solar power on homes, and then the excess power goes back into the grid and charges batteries, and also at night, the home and back into during the high demand times, back into the grid. The siding setbacks and step backs are also so important to the L Street corridor, linear park presently. In the EIR, it shows roads running through the open spaces at the north and south end of the L Street corridor. Meanwhile, by comparison, in the latest form-based code, iteration images show L Street paved from 7th Street to 10th Street. These figures are listed as gateway area, potential new developments. Moving forward, I would ask of the council voting members to begin to engage committee members to vision the L Street linear park, honoring the gateway policies for that layout the park corridor and to lay out the park corridor that prioritizes setbacks and allows for more space for frontages, just basically that this can be the centerpiece of the future gateway. You know, and then maybe secondarily, consider things like privately owned public spaces. And with that in mind, I would just hope that at some point we can begin to envision for this linear park, because I think it will be important, if this is something that comes to fruition, that the development is harmonious with that space, you know, otherwise it'll just be built over the top of it. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
So Jeff Harris, swing from Myrtle Town. My brother and I were Boy Scouts, 253 at Sacramento, both served the rank of Eagle, I-89. And so I'm coming across the bay, down the hill from Myrtle Town. We gentry like to occupy the high ground overlooking water. Pretty typical. Okay, so now briefly, who are the Jews who made an early claim to this land, Canaan, Palestine, Israel? The bulk of them were Canaanites, so they had connections with Egypt and through Abraham to Samaria. That's where the brains started coming from. I appreciate the Christian maoris in New Zealand recognizing that the Hebrews were an indigenous people to this area. Incidentally, the demonstration made by the maoris discredited pro-Palestinian marchers from appearing at a venue in Australia and New Zealand. Now, the Jews have the best fighters in the region, followed by the Iranians, Egyptian and Hezbollah. So the Jews have the ones with the first claims to the land. They've got the looks, they've got the brains, they've got the money, they've got the best warriors, and they may have more land. They say you can't have it all unless you're God's chosen people. Okay, incidentally, there have been some claims made about the Israelis attempting to commit genocide against the Palestinians. Well, one must apologize on behalf of the Israelis for not being very good at that, for in fact, the population of the Palestinians has increased from about 1 million in 1960 to 5 million today. More specifically, one finds by Google search the following. The number of Palestinians inside occupied Palestine increased from 900,000 in 1960 to 5 million in 2017 at a growth rate of 2.5%. Okay. Also, Simka Rokman, a prominent MP at the Knesset, Israel's parliament, has made a convincing claim that there is no occupation. Consider the following quotation. Occupation is not the word, you cannot occupy your own land. Israel is not an occupier in Israel because that's the land of Israel. Israel got it. The status quo, okay, let's see, that was an article. But, okay. Furthermore, the territorial effect of Israel is not a colonial territorial one. Either it is Israelis are an indigenous people to this region, rather it is a reconquest, a taking back of what is rightfully ours, much like that of the Gothic Spanish reconquista of the later medieval period. So what have the Palestinians contributed? Terror organizations. Yes, absolutely. The Palestinians are listed as an umbrella organization for various terrorist subsidiaries, at least 20 of them. Four of the leading ones active in Gaza are Hamas, founded in 1987 by Ahmed Yassin and Mohammed Taha, as an outcast of the Muslim Brotherhood. Hamas's goal is said to be the establishment of a Palestinian state. Is it? Actually, that is not really correct. The Palestinians are not that interested in having their own state, they just want the Jews not to have one, they want to get rid of Israel. They also have the Popular Resistance Committee, the Palestinian Islamic Jihad, which founded in the 1970s, Palestinian Liberation Organization, the PLO founded in June 1964, and the Associated Palestinian Authority, which long was fought out more active in the West Bank. In addition, there's the well-known Hezbollah, which is currently operating out of Lebanon. Okay, note, at the pro-Palestinian protest, someone holding up a sign saying Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny, the Tusperi Israel, indicating that none of them exist. That is saying that Israel is a fictitious construct, does not have legitimacy. Yes, that was very angering. I can accept the talk about occupation, continue this right.
Thank you for your comment.
Hey, y'all. Here to talk about a corollary to the housing. So there's a housing crisis in Arcata. I feel like I don't need to qualify that. Rent control is effective at keeping people in their homes longer. Rent control helps curb the housing crisis by preventing homelessness in the first place. Rent control promotes stability, tenants are more invested in their local neighborhoods and communities. Rent control preserves diversity, rent control leaves tenants with more money to spend in the local economy. Rent control does not protect tenants who fail to pay rent or violate their lease from eviction, state law enforces this. Rent control does not stop development of new housing. Rent control has already helped curb rental prices in many towns all over California. Landlords do well under rent control. Rent control does not affect quality and quantity of housing. According to the 2018 to 2022 U.S. Census data, Arcata had 66.7%, almost two-thirds of its residents renting compared to the 43.3% of residents renting in Humboldt County, similar rates for California in the U.S. Given current trends, the rate of Arcata renter population is projected to continue to grow in size and proportion. Under the current AB 1482 California Tenant Protection Act, rent is capped at 10% in a 12-month period, 5% plus the CPI up to 5%. At this rate, landlords are able to effectively double rent every seven years. That means that our average price of 1,000 for a one-bedroom now could be 2,000 by 2030. People's income here is definitely not going to keep up with that. I propose and would like to add to the agenda for the next Arcata City Council meeting and Arcata City Ordinance. One, in addition to AB 1482, capping the rent increases on all residential properties, single-family homes, apartments, et cetera, to the consumer price index, no more than 5% in a 12-month period. This will take 14 rather than seven years to double rent, so one-bedroom's averaging 1,000 would average at 1,400 rather than 2,000 max by 2030. Two, an elected rent board funded in majority or over 50% by a per-unit fee on landlords. This would be part of a larger Arcata housing task force. The ordinance should include a strong private right of action so that tenants can sue for money damages, injunctive relief and attorney fees against a landlord that violates the ordinance, this is essential for enforcement. Three, increase transparency from the landlord to tenant. If a landlord would like to raise the rent more than CPI, the landlord must provide causation and evidence for the necessity of this raise or fair return to the tenant. The rent board must sign off on this. Four, in addition, in succession, are extending current state eviction laws to include residencies built after 1995, single-family homes and condos, anti-harassment laws, security deposit interest requirements, disclosure obligations, routine code inspection programs and annual registration.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm Jarrett. I got a page for you. You can cut my mic off if you want, but I'm going to finish it. It's not that long, I promise. Arcata City Council, a ceasefire resolution is your moral obligation as human beings. That's just the truth of it. If there is a compelling reason not to end the unparalleled horror being unleashed upon the people of Gaza by the IDF, no one seems to be able to articulate it. That's because it doesn't exist. There is no possible defense for a continuation of the killing, the slaughter, the loss and the unspeakable suffering that the Palestinian people have been enduring for the past 75 years, and that has been shown to us more holy these past five months than any other mass murder in the 21st century. I'm only 23, but the things I've seen as I've watched the unfolding of the genocide in Gaza have shaken me to my core. I've been paralyzed at work and in class, unable to picture anything but blood-smeared, crammed hospitals full of screaming orphaned children covered in the dust of their obliterated homes. As early as November 2023, 45 families have been wiped clean from the Gazan health registry. That is genocide. I've seen children with opened heads and their brains spilled out over the ground. I've seen old women with gray dead skin underneath rugs in the street as their sole form of funerary dignity. I've seen the skeletons of children left behind covered in ants. I've seen babies and toddlers burned by white phosphorus and uncountable thousands of them without arms or legs or skin left unscorched. I've seen men and boys stripped to their underwear and held at gunpoint. I've seen them gunned down under flags of surrender. I've seen them tied naked to chairs and tortured by the soldiers of the IDF. The ravenous suffering of these people is evident to any who have eyes. And this is not just the images. Time for some numbers. 27,000 Palestinians have been murdered by Israel since October 7th. 70% of those are women and children, as almost half of the population of Gaza is under 18. Thirty, I knew I was going to screw this one up. 300,000 homes were listed as destroyed three months ago. 1.2 million people have been forced from their homes. All of the mosques in Gaza have been destroyed. The medical industry there is approaching its last death throes. UNRWA has had its funding cut to pieces by the leaders of the free world. 10 children every day are seriously injured and either limbs hacked off by doctors who have no painkillers to use and hospitals under siege by snipers. And support for Hamas has gone up, further entrenching religious fascists that have prompted another magnitude of desolation upon their people and then turn and run. Anyway, the issue is sliced, this is a war of revenge and a flavoring genocide signed off on by Joe Biden with our tax money. Hang on to a few words there. Five months, while I cite to you some final statistics. Dachau, one of the largest Nazi extermination camps during World War II, definitely the oldest in the heart of the Third Reich. 100 sub-camps, tens of thousands of inmates, it was a metropolis of death. Between 30,000 and 41,800 people were massacred there over five years before the Allies liberated. Consider this.
Thank you, that's your time.
The SS killed 40,000.
Thank you, that's your time. Thank you, that is your time. Thank you, that is your time.
Good evening. I'm Rabbi Bob Rottenberg, Arcata resident, one of the rabbis at Temple Beth El in Eureka. Maybe you could stop the clock for a minute?
Please keep it quiet in the audience, and please respect the person that is speaking.
Thank you. I'm Rabbi Bob Rottenberg, Arcata resident, one of the rabbis at Temple Beth El in Eureka. Let's assume for a moment that everything that our previous speaker said is true. I think we've all seen the statistics, we've seen the pictures, we've seen everything else. Let's assume it's all true. If he were still here, I would ask him, so what? No, not so what, what does it mean? But so what can we do about it? My concern, and what I would ask him is, if he's still here. He's gone. Does he hold me responsible for these actions? Does he hold the Jewish residents of Arcata responsible for these actions? We heard earlier, speakers talking about the increase in antisemitism here in Arcata, as well as in the county. That's what I think you all should be concerned about. I'm here this evening to urge you to do anything that you can to put in, to stop the antisemitism that's becoming more and more evident here. I'm not sure what you all can do. My concern is that any resolution that you might adopt winds up just fueling antisemitism. I want you to think about that. There might be the perfect resolution that says everything beautifully, we're all opposed to the killing, we would like to see the hostages received, released, an end to all the bombing, right? And bringing in humanitarian aid. I don't think anybody's going to argue about those things. The issue is, how does any of that affect the Jewish population in our city? So that's what I would like you to be thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Paul Patino, Arcata. Two words, ceasefire, real simple. No judgment, no other stuff, just stop. Stop the warring. And I think it's, I think it's real simple, just a ceasefire, and you don't have to add a bunch of other stuff to it. I'd like to cede the rest of my time to Farid.
Thank you. I moved to Humboldt County in December of 2016. My family purchased 15 acres of endangered old growth salmonit habitat in the Jacoby Creek Forest while I began at Humboldt State University in the spring semester of 2017. Shortly after my arrival, another colored student named Josiah Lawson was brutally murdered due to hate crimes. Ever since, hate crimes have been running rampant throughout the school campus and the local Arcata community. The local governments have been non-responsive to these targeted attacks against minority populations within the region, and if they ever do respond, it is only on behalf of the perpetrators to assist them in escalating their persecution ever further into ever greater life-threatening extremities. Since the murder of Josiah Lawson, I have personally come under constant attack, continuing to this day, and no local government agency has yet to respond on my behalf. I have had a lynch mob formed against me by my neighbors due to being the first non-Caucasian person to move into a previously white-only community, them invading my land with bats, machetes and homemade weapons in attempts to terrorize me into fleeing this region. This same group of people then conspired in a premeditated attack against my dogs on my own property, and gained the assistance of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department to create a legal animal control hearings, where the only injured party were my dogs, that they then used to make illegal public claims to my private property without fair due process. I have had the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department attempt to gaslight me into insanity over basic traffic stops, and then attempt to lock me away in an insane asylum due to my religious beliefs and mental disabilities. I've had a group of white women who were attending HSU aggressively spreading vicious and malicious false rumors about me, depicting me as an Islamic terrorist to segregate me out of the local community and aggravate riotous behavior in the population against me, which resulted in violent drug dealers and a known gang affiliate with the Hells Angels coming to me, threatening my life, and attempting to rally people in the town plaza to lynch me. When I investigated into this group that was targeting me, it was revealed that these women were a part of a satanic sex cult to worship the demon Mother Lilith, worshiping themselves as goddesses. And they were aggressively going around the community telling everyone not to worship God, the most merciful, most kind, but to worship the goddess instead, who they referred to as themselves. They hated all men and viewed men as inherently inferior to them and the root of all evil in the world, while using this as justification for committing evil into the world. When I brought this to HSU's attention, they advocated for this kind of aggression in the student population and stated that it is justified, based on their aggressive perceptions and violent beliefs. When I wrote a non-violent communication textbook complaining about Cal Poly Humboldt's use of violent communication, they openly accused me of being an Islamic terrorist and recruited the California Attorney General to argue in civil court proceedings that I have no constitutional rights, that all constitutional rights should be deprived to me, and that they should be allowed to classify me as an Islamic terrorist based entirely on hearsay with no real evidence, regardless of whether I ever committed a crime or even if I had any intent to ever commit a crime. The city of Arcata has been informed about this for many years but have taken minimal to no action regarding these incidents due to their own fear and terror of this highly organized and highly criminally oriented domestic terrorist group that has infiltrated the region. In 2006, the FBI sent out a warning that white supremacy was on a rise, and they were infiltrating the police departments across the nation. In 2009, Homeland Security put out a warning stating that white supremacists pose the greatest domestic terrorist threat to the United States and were recruiting ex-military personnel targeting school campuses. Hate crimes against Muslims increased 63% since the Obama administration and tripled since the Trump administration. The city of Arcata cannot keep ignoring these matters by remaining passive to the aggression rampaging through our local community and the world at large. As someone who has been targeted by hate groups on many occasions, often spearheaded by white women, it is terrifying to me that the entire city council is currently comprised exclusively of white women. It has been well-recorded that white women have often played a leading role in the commission of hate crimes carried out by white men, such as the case of Emmett Till and Joseph Spell, and even within modern times with the satanic One Taste Sex Cult in the Bay Area. If it is true that behind every great man is a great woman, then it must also be true that behind every evil man is an evil woman. It has been well-known throughout our nation that Humboldt County is a cesspool of white supremacists and operates as a stronghold for this domestic terrorist group that is declaring an insurrection against our nation through espionage and infiltration. Yet local governments of this region have continued to act like their presence is nonexistent. The evidence is overwhelming that they are here, and I have thousands of pages of documentation that can be offered forth as evidence. The city of Arcata needs to address these matters by creating a task force for investigating into domestic terrorist organizations in this region, including a full-scale investigation into the local police departments, schools, and positions of government. The city of Arcata needs to take a strong stance in ending the commission of hate crimes against the Islamic community as well as other targeted communities, both domestic and abroad. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I wanna address what you said, because...
No, 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 talk to us.
Yeah, no, I know, but if you wanted to ask the other guy a question...
No, you talk to us. Talk to us.
I'm gonna talk to everybody, okay? I'm gonna address the council, but I'm gonna address everybody here, because I've heard a lot of really...
Is our lawyer on the line tonight?
A lot of really hateful racist statements being sent, both on Zoom and in public here.
A point of order.
Hi, Nubia, can you please address the speaker to just address the council, please?
Yes, yes, Mayor, as a point of order for members of the public that are participating tonight...
Can we stop the time, man?
...in order to participate in a productive and respectful manner, we request that you provide all your comments directly to the council. The idea behind this is to eliminate the possibility of intimidation to individuals that are there to speak and provide their public comment. So based off of that, please direct your comments only to the council.
Okay. Even though the rabbi addressed the other gentleman and tried to talk to him, I'll address my comments and demonstrate that there's a double standard here at the council against, for some people. Because what I wanted to tell him was that we, I don't blame any Jews in this community. You can't blame them, okay? I love Jews. I have no hatred in my heart, like a lot of the hatred that has been expressed tonight. I don't hold it. I weep for those hostages, for the victims of October 7th. It's horrible. Who could not? But who could also turn a blind eye to the death of tens of thousands of children, innocent children, who didn't vote for those people? And it wasn't even a majority of Palestinians that voted for Hamas, it was a plurality of well under 50%, and that was over 15 years ago. Where's the, how can you blame children and hold them responsible? It's their leaders that have failed them, just like the Israeli leaders have failed their people and failed to keep them safe by not addressing the underlying racism of the occupation. This is, it does not justify terrorism, but it does explain the mindset of people that are raised in an open-air prison, who are born into one. When other people come to this council and say that the Redwood Peace and Justice Center are terrorists, and that is not spoken to by the council at all? When a person comes up here and says that Israelis are not committing genocide well enough as he sits and smirks at the comments of other people? That's not addressed. This is hypocrisy. This is, I moved to Arcata because this is a place where there's, where I thought that there was a consensus against injustice, that I thought it was a place that people would speak out, that the city council, which spoke out against the war in Iraq and spoke out against the war in Afghanistan, why can't they speak about the US-funded ethnic cleansing going on in Gaza? It's pretty sickening. And I'll just leave you with a quote from Martin Luther King. It said, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." When you are silent, when people urge you not to touch this issue with a 20-foot pole, what they're saying is shut up, be quiet, and just let it sweep it under the carpet. That's, it's been 75 years of that, and that's what's led us to the situation that we're in right now. So no, silence is complicity. I don't, I don't think anybody here wants to kill babies or kill children. That would be ridiculous. But to not take a stand for obvious injustice when the rest of the world, when international courts have ruled against this, is surprising and disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Speaker Bob made some good points, but good questions. You know, do people hold him responsible? This is a, this is something that we face locally. This is a local issue, as many people have testified here today. And it's not just because, you know, our tax dollars are funding genocide. You know, the, over 50% of every single dollar we pay in taxes goes to the war machine. And when there's an escalating war in the Middle East, that proportion is likely to only go up. This is a local issue. It's a local issue for Jewish folks, like you've been hearing. It's a local issue for Palestinians, local Palestinians, like you've been hearing. And I would say it's not, it's not something that we can just buck the responsibility on. We really want to come together as a community. I think that's what the Redwood Peace and Justice Center coalition is working towards, is to build coalition with different groups, to show that we're united as one community in passing a ceasefire resolution. I think that the responsibility element, I mean, it's a big one. I, as an Anglo-Saxon Protestant, have a responsibility to speak out against the genocide in Gaza. I have a responsibility to oppose the right-wing fascists that are anti-Jewish. Because that's, that is the antisemitism that we need to protect against that is likely to rise in the next two years if we continue to be divided as a community. This is a real issue that we face locally. And so, yes, we need to take responsibility to oppose what the government of Israel is doing, what the government in Washington is doing, killing all these children. They bombed like every single hospital. I mean, it's like, I go to the first hospital, oh, it was a, they claimed it was some legitimate target. Every single hospital is a legitimate target? I think not. And so, I would welcome, you know, if any of you are familiar with groups that would want to come together, you know, to find a resolution that would actually, you know, work for the community. We can come together as a community and protect our own, not just Jewish folks, but the Palestinian folks, the Arabs, the Muslims in our community.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, thank you. Sam Neworth. I am Jewish. It's important for me to say that because I don't see antisemitism as being used in a fair way by Jews. I think there is a legitimate generational trauma that triggers it, but I don't think it's being handled right. I don't think that what Rabbi Bob said makes sense. If I understood correctly, he says, even if what they're saying is going on in Gaza is true, we can't do anything about it because it'll raise antisemitism. Well, that just, if that's what he's saying, that is the most narcissistic thing I've ever heard. I have experienced antisemitism my whole life. I know what it's about. I grew up in a conservative Jewish family, and when I went to the Muslim prayer group, it was astonishing. This, I do things to heal antisemitism in my, in my community. So I went to the Jewish, I mean, to the Muslim prayer group, and I told the Inman, "I'm Jewish, can I be here?" He said, "Yes, absolutely." And we had great conversations, but what was most amazing was, it was just like being in temple. They're chanting and bowing and... We are so close. Maybe that's why there's so much hatred. But it was, it was way closer than a Christian ceremony, and they were warm and welcoming. Another thing you can do to heal antisemitism is realize that Jews are carrying this hair trigger antisemitism, some are, some aren't. There are a lot of Jewish rabbis against the state of Israel that don't believe in the state of Israel. There are many different kinds of Jews. Rabbi Bob does not represent all the Jews of Arcata. I've signed up 850 or so signatures for ceasefire, and many of them are Jews. So how are we going to heal antisemitism in the world? We're going to heal it by having a ceasefire. The reason antisemitism is on the rise is the world sees what Israel is doing. It's not going to be healed by recycling the trauma and having this antisemitism everywhere, everywhere, everywhere. I realize that people are being hyper vigilant, and they, they're carrying that, and it's real to them, but they're not healing it. They're passing it on, and they're turning the Palestinians into the Holocaust victims that they once were. And to stop that cycle of abuse, we have to stop denying it. Rabbi Bob is in denial. Many Jews are in denial. It's hard to handle that the country that represented safety has turned into this, racism.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Barbara Carnum. I want to thank the council for allowing so many diverse points of view. If the council decides that they want to support a resolution about this conflict, my hope is that you will take a more comprehensive look at it and look beyond the emotional aspects which everybody, everybody obviously agrees is a terrible situation. This is a horrible situation. However, it's got a lot of, a lot of different sides to it that aren't always presented. So if the council does choose to weigh in on it, I hope they will take a more comprehensive look. There are more than, there are several proposals out there that would, that, that have a broader look. So I would hope that you would look to those before you make any decisions on what you're going to, if you choose to support something like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I almost say good night, but I still say good evening. My name is Nativa Levy-Boyd, and I want also to express something around the issue of the ceasefire. I was here at the first meeting a month ago, and it was not voted to approve the ceasefire, and now we are back. Things take time. The city council member at the time said that they needed more time to understand the situation, where it takes a lifetime to understand the situation. It's so complex. I don't know how much you have learned. What I learned in that one month is that the increase of antisemitism have gone up, and it has been very unpleasant to see this phenomenon. I want to also say that it did not happen because of the war in Gaza. Antisemitists have been there for thousands of years, and me, being raised in Europe, I've seen it there. I've seen it even after I left Europe. It has been happening more and more in the last 10, 15 years. And we are blamed, the Jewish people are being blamed for everything, and they are the ones that are easily chosen, it's a joke, to be blamed for everything. And even, so it's easy to do, everybody goes along with it. But as people have spoken, and I'm speaking now, I feel like a notion of peace, understanding within each other, even the, all the people who have spoken here, some have a voice that expressed anger because it's just so strong. There's still so much anger, even though if we hug each other and... To really, what is it that the city council could help for us, people of different opinions regarding this issue, could manage to finally stop the hate within themselves and can see something? The ceasefire, as another thing to say, what does it mean? What does it mean? It becomes some layer idealistic concept that it could be the end of the war, and the end of the horrible thing, where a war is a war, and there are people that died, unfortunately, more on one side than the other. And it's, without having a resolution of how to solve the problem after the ceasefire, if it will be chosen, or even after the war ends, is to find how it's going to work out. And we have to find that first in order to solve and end the war. So that's what I want to share, and I hope you will...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanna McGarry. I speak here all the time, and I've spoken on this matter of a ceasefire at the previous meetings in, back in November. It was quite a while ago, November 15th. I've watched the videos. My father always told me, "History, history's really important." So I want to talk a little bit about my history. I grew up in Los Angeles in a very conservative Irish Catholic family, but my parents taught great values to their children. And one of them was to look at the history and the values of what happened in history. And one of the things that inspired me was when I went to college, I was still pretty conservative and uninterested in a lot of things about the great big world, but I saw a film about the Vietnam War. And at that time, they were showing children running naked, that famous photograph of the Napalm Girl. And it was at that point where people started to understand that war is very harmful to children. And I have spoken up here a lot about the children, and I've listened a lot at ceremonial matters and at other aspects of the meetings about worrying about and caring about the children and the future of Arcata and the children. And I brought this book the last time to talk about The Bystander... And I brought this book the last time to talk about the bystander as opposed to the rescuer and how back in World War II and prior to that, there were people in Europe who just stood by and let things happen and were silent. And then there were those who did something. I went to the Martin Luther King event on January 15th at the Adorni and the theme was, "It starts with me." So it always starts with me and I've been standing vigil at nights from Thanksgiving to New Year's Eve by myself often, but others have joined me and I thank those who have done that. I fast once a week. I'm on a fast right now because it really, I'm really hungry and I'm thinking about the hungry children in Gaza right now. And I think the history of Arcata is such that we have been outspoken and outraged by what's happened in other parts of the world. And a lot of it maybe is selfish because the money's going somewhere else and we want some of that, but it's also because we care and we should have compassion in our hearts and in our community for what happens to other people elsewhere as much as what happens to us. A ceasefire resolution, ours is very simple. Ceasefire, immediate aid, negotiate for release of all captives. The petition's still going around and we will not stop coming here until you put this on the agenda. It is so important humanitarian.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, good evening, council. I'm Fred Wise. 14 months ago, the council approved $118,000. It was intended for improvements to the Form-based Code and public outreach. There's a very specific list of tasks that were included. The new Form-based Code is out, the newest revision. There's hardly any change. The mistakes that were there before are still there, but more importantly, there's very little of what the council approved. My rough estimates of the $118,000 that had specific tasks, about $20,000 or $30,000 was spent. The rest of it seems to be gone. It's very sad because we've moved on. We could have used this over this last year. We don't have it. There is no protection at all for the L Street Linear Park. I am begging you to make this happen. It's really necessary. There's building heights and setbacks along the linear park for the buildings there that need to be revisited. The general plan draft environmental impact report is now out. It's 1,990 pages. The public has until March 18th to send in comments. I am appalled at the sloppiness of this report. The errors, omissions, lack of cohesiveness. When I look at a report like this, I look for internal inconsistencies where it says one thing in one place, different things somewhere else. This has that factually incorrect information, possibility of lawsuits to the city because, based on that, and isn't in line with the world vision of what we're doing here. The 1,999 pages has a contents list of 32 items. That's insufficient on arcataone.com. I've got a contents, an annotated contents of about 600 lines that enable you to read. Here are some examples of what's in this environmental impact report. It has analysis of historical structures for Gateway, not for Arcata. It has analysis of environmental issues for Gateway, not for the rest of Arcata. It says, quote, "Approximately 10 parks are located within a one quarter miles from the Gateway area." I count three parks. It says 10. It says, there are figures for housing units. You're familiar with the Interlet Opportunity Zones, downtown, what's left of Craftson Ball, Valley West. You can imagine that. It shows 500 housing units for all of Gateway. It shows 1,340 housing units for Valley West and the other areas. It shows the North Coast co-op parcel as potentially for housing. There's no mention of king tides, storm events, merging groundwater. I can go on. I'll send this to you in writing. It's missing a lot of stuff. I'm sure it'll get improved, but it shouldn't have gotten this far. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
Well, before my time starts, I have a question. Can I use a recording? Okay. Hi, I'm Tristan Murphy. Thank you for
You know what? I'm going to stop you. I'm sorry. I am correct, I stand corrected. You may use recording. I apologize.
Okay.
But it's all in your three minutes.
President Biden. President Biden. President Biden. Mr. Blinken. Mr. Blinken. Can you hear me? Prime Ministers and Presidents of the European countries, can you hear me? Can you hear the screams from Shifa Hospital, from Al-Aouda's Hospital? Can you hear the screams from innocent people, refugees sheltering, trying to find a safe place, being bombed by the Israeli attack forces this morning inside the hospital? Hospitals that are the temples of humanity and protection. When are you going to stop this? You're all complicit.
The ICJ, South Africa visited the ICJ and charged Israel with genocide. They had an interim meeting because of the nature of the crime, they wanted to try to stop the damage and they put some, some regulations on Israel. Israel turned around and went out there and started killing. Israel has been stealing and killing since 1948. And if you don't believe that, you need to take a deeper dive into the history.
Ma'am, you need to address the council, please.
You need to take a deeper dive into the history. It's not enough for Israel to kill people. There's somewhere between 30 and 50,000 people that are dead and those numbers start not to mean anything. More than 1,000 children have had their limbs amputated, most of them without anesthesia. Women are having caesareans without anesthesia. Israel is making damn sure the hospitals don't have medication. Kids are eating grass and, and people are talking about antisemitism. I'm sorry. I do believe
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you one more time to address this.
This, this genocide goes beyond a perceived or even a real antisemitic remark or something you read on the wall. These people are being butchered and it's not enough that they're killing them. They went into a graveyard and they pulled up graves. They have bulldozers. It's not enough to kill them. They got to desecrate them too. They're going into their houses and their bank accounts and stealing their money. They're pulling up their underwear and making videos and there's nothing honorable about what's going on there. And you know what? There's one simple solution. Nobody wants to talk about it. They want out of prison. They've been in prison for 16, 17 years. They've been occupied since 48. They want that to stop their people. They're some of the most highly educated people in the world. Did you know that? And despite the fact that they've been crippled economically?
Thank you for your comments.
This isn't about antisemitism.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any online comments?
We currently have six online comments. The first one has a screen name beginning with Shannon. Please go ahead, Shannon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, hi, thank you. I was there earlier this, today, so it's me again. I just, I'm listening to everyone share their opinion and their thoughts and I just feel like things are bubbling up. They're bubbling up in our community. People are having a lot of thoughts and feelings and it's coming out. And it's coming out in our day-to-day interactions. You see what's going on here at the council. This is what is happening in our, at the grocery store and, you know, at your kid's birthday party. I mean, this is the kind of stuff that's kind of coming out. I mean, ever since October 7th, I've just had this big cloud over my head. Like, I just feel like, like doom is happening. And I just, you know, I'm part of the Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition. We're just a group of people that are really upset and sad about what's going on. We're not terrorists. I promise you that. I'm a 40-year-old mom of two kids. I have a special needs daughter. I work for a nonprofit. I help people, water agencies figure out their water quality issues. You know, I don't have any extra time, but I'm spending all the extra time I have to try to help these poor people that are being bombed. We've dropped more bombs on them than were dropped in Dresden, Germany, that were dropped on Hiroshima. I mean, it is insane. This is unprecedented, what's going on over there. Like, it's not like it's just a war. It is a slaughter. It is a genocide. The highest, the highest court in the world has basically said, "It's plausible. It's genocide." So what I'm saying is, if we don't take a stand now, years down the line, when they actually rule it is a genocide, it's going to put a dark shadow on us. We already are looking bad on the global stage because we are basically the only country standing with Israel. And to be against Israel and what they are doing is in no way antisemitic. I have friends who are Jewish. I have, I work with people who are Jewish. Many people that I've been protesting with and organizing with are Jewish. It has nothing to do with being Jewish. This is a land issue. You guys have your land statement that you read every council? This is exactly that. This is, we're trying to help save these people's culture. It's being wiped out. They're destroying everything there. Their mosques, their historic buildings, their homes, they're raiding their houses. They're taking everything, destroying everything. This is, this is, this is a native population that is being wiped out, not only in Gaza, but in the West Bank. We, as a community, need to do something. And if you look at our resolution, I know you've looked at it, it's pretty vanilla. It's nothing crazy. We're not even going into the occupation or anything like that. We're just saying, let's stop the
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have a screen name H2O. Go ahead, please.
Ceasefire Resolution. My name is Shlomit, a person of shalom, peace, sustainable peace, not a ceasefire. We do not elect city councils and committees members to take a stand on foreign affairs. This city has already decided to avoid wasting its time on dealing with foreign affairs. These resolutions only serve to create division and unsafe environments for all. I call upon the city council to resist the well-oiled and subsidized pressure by the Council on American-Islamic Relations here. Hamas enthusiasts are roaming nowadays all over California on Israel's behalf, pretending to care about children, not Jewish children, of course. Those who champion a ceasefire resolution forgot to mention today are Hamas supporters and would like us to forget that there was a ceasefire on October 6th, which was horrifically broken by Hamas on October 7th, when this terrorist organization brought in Hamas pieces in Israel, entered the peaceful dwellings of the very people who cooperated with Gazans who were helping them by providing enforcement, by driving them to Israeli medical facilities and establishing and nurturing what was considered to be neighborly relationships. All that was destroyed by the genocidal butchering, beatificating, burning lives, torturing, kidnapping, and horrific ethnic raping done by Hamas and its patrons and are still both supported and denied by most of the Gazan population and Hamas supporters in the US. I suggest again, just avoid making a decision on that. That's why we are actually elect Congress and President. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is screen name Simona. Go ahead, please.
Hello, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hello. Do people proposing the ceasefire resolution want Israel to have another October 7th? I'm simply baffled. There was ceasefire on October 6th and we all know how that turned out for Israelis on October 7th. Enough. So what does ceasefire actually means in this case? Because it sounds pretty good to mean in theory, but what it really means? That Israel puts down its guns and Hamas continues to eliminate Israel and the Jews worldwide. They never hit this back. They repeat this regularly, that they will do this again and again. They don't want peace. Absolutely not. There are over 100 Israeli and American hostages. They're still in Gaza tunnels. No food, no medication. They're abused daily, harassed. Girls are getting raped. And the audacity of some speakers to say that the release of captives on both sides? Let's be clear. On one side, there are Israeli hostages held in Gaza, including children. On the other side, there are terrorists in Israeli prisons who get three meals a day and visitation rights. And if people can't see the difference, there's something really wrong with their moral standards. And for people who use the word genocide, learn the definition. Google is free. It's a deliberate killing of ethnicity or a group of people. That's what Hamas attempted to do on October 7th. That's what genocide is. And as Hamas repeatedly said, they will do it again. What Israel is trying to do is to prevent another genocide to ever happen on its soil. And yes, every single hospital that has Hamas monsters hiding in them is a legitimate target per international law. Someone drew an example of World War II. Let's compare. When Allies were fighting the Nazis, people didn't scream ceasefire. There were innocent Germans there and they were killed. But Allies continued to bomb Germany to defeat the Nazis. And Israel should continue to defeat Hamas because for Hamas, after Israel, the West is next. It's not about land, by the way. People who claim that simply don't know history. This is Jew hatred that goes back thousands of years. And by the way, Israel does not occupy Gaza. They left Gaza in 2005 and there are no Jews living there, dead or alive. And by the way, people who said they desecrated the cemeteries, that's because Israelis were looking for the hostages that were killed in Gaza. There was a tip that some of them were buried, so they were looking for them because we want all our people back, alive and sadly, the dead ones. Do the right thing, council members. No such resolutions should be ever allowed anywhere in California or in the world. Israel has the right and obligation to defend itself. Let it do the job. Propose resolutions instead to educate our youth here about what genocide actually means. Propose resolutions to teach kids
Thank you for your comments, Simona.
The next is, starts with screen name Gary. Go ahead, please, Gary.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gary Bluntfield and, and, oh, wow. So much I wanted to, want to say, but basically, I want to start with the, the sign that was, you know, at Mad River Community Hospital. That was in a style that was very much like white supremacist type antisemitic, you know, stuff. And is it just a coincidence that it appeared, you know, with all of the discussion of this happening? I don't know. Perhaps it's a testing of the waters to see who, you know, how much resistance there is to antisemitism. Another unknown question. But, but basically, one thing I really want to state is that just because I'm opposed to trying to make a ceasefire resolution, I don't want anyone to think that I'm not completely opposed to the death that's happening. One, in fact, I would say that I, I would rather see a cease to the, you know, ceasefire and a stop to all the fighting much more than Hamas leadership would. They're, they're gaining everything by, by goading Israel into overreacting with the, you know, the far-right wing government. And they knew exactly what they were, how, how the Netanyahu government would overreact. Make no mistake of that. This is what they wanted. And that's why they're doing everything they can to postpone having a ceasefire. So it's, I, I really think that these resolutions that, that some cities have been passing are doing more harm than good as far as really stopping killing. So, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this and, yeah, please, we, we all need to do what we, what we can and, but misguided, one-sided resolutions are not misguided, one-sided resolutions are not the way to achieve a real ceasefire.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is screen name starting with ocean. Go ahead, please.
Hi, it's pretty late and I'm going to try to be articulate. I'm a Jewish American. I was there earlier tonight. And I've been listening while I'm trying to finish writing a paper. I'm an anthropology major. And I'm just kind of, my mind is just kind of blown by, by all the different comments tonight. And I doubt I'm going to change anyone's mind about anything, but I have to say something because I have Jewish heritage and and Jewish identity. And Israel does not represent all Jews. And I think people really need to understand that. I, I, it's heartbreaking to me to see that people who have endured a lot of horrors are turning a blind eye to essentially the same thing. And I really don't want you to think that I'm extremist because I'm not. I just really think that never again, I take that very seriously. And I take my Jewish heritage really seriously, you know? Jews have done a lot of really wonderful things in the name of human rights and sticking up for others, like in the civil rights movement and, you know? My family comes from Ukraine, you know? I, I just, I, this extremist government does not speak for my Jewish identity. And, you know, I have friends in Israel and I, and there's many groups in Israel that show how much, a lot of Israelis, a lot of young Israelis are not being spoken for, and they're being taken over by these extremists, you know? What I don't understand is seeing Jewish people in communities in America, you know, refusing to look at this. And the problem is, is that, you know, anyone who turns a blind eye to this, this thing that's going on in the world, it's not going to go away. You know, people are going to keep coming to these city council meetings. People are going to keep saying, we don't want this. This is not okay. And, you know, there's a lot of people in Israel who want equality and justice for everyone. And the further this, you know, the more this goes on, yes, the more there's antisemitism. Because people are seeing all over the media things that IDF are doing. But meanwhile, you know.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Our next speaker is screen name beginning with Regina. Go ahead, please. Go ahead, please.
Hi, sorry about that. It looks like I was muted. I was able to just unmute myself. I hope you guys can hear me now.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So my message is simple tonight. I don't believe that the city council is in the position to pass resolutions such as ceasefire resolution. This is something that is foreign conflict related, thousands of miles away. And yes, I am an American Jew and I care very deeply about what's happening in the Middle East. But this particular place, you know, the city council, is not where we need to be deciding on whether Israel needs to withdraw and stop this, this war. Ceasefire like this means we are back to square one with Hamas, where they want to terminate Israel. And they want us to put down the weapons so that they can continue to annihilate Jews. And we just simply can't have it happen. So I suggest and I ask that we focus on addressing Jew hatred in this community here and around our country. And I ask that the city council does the right thing and does not add ceasefire resolution to this agenda anymore. And for those of you who spoke tonight and who still wonder what happened on October, October 7th and why Israel is defending itself, I highly recommend that you watch a 45-minute documentary that's been compiled by the Israeli government and the IDF that contains raw footage of the insane massacre that happened in Israel on October 7. And let's remind all of us here that the ceasefire was there on October 6, and it was terminated by Hamas in this, by this unprovoked massacre. So let Israel do its job, and please stay away from proposing resolutions that have non-packed to our community except increase antisemitism and divide, and divide us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
There are no other online comments. Okay. And we're on to council and staff reports. So our reports shall specifically be limited to city business and shall not request or lead to action by the council at this meeting. So Natra, thank you for hanging in there. Let's receive an update from the city engineer on the local road safety program.
Good evening, mayor and council members and the members of the public and staff here. Today I'm here to give you just a quick update on our local road safety plan. We did a similar update mid-last year, and I went through the local road safety plan, what we plan to do and what we, what the ultimate goal is. So today I'm just going to give you just a progress report, where we are and what our next steps are. So what is a local road safety plan? Local road safety plan is a data-driven safety plan based on public input, collisions, and risk factors. Then I will explain later on what those risk factors are. And, and why are we doing our local road safety plan? The reason we are doing local road safety plan is, first of all, we need to have a good plan so that we can move forward in the right direction. And second, once we have this local road safety plan, we will be eligible for grant funding for which we are not currently eligible. So in 2021, we received grant through Caltrans to prepare a local road safety plan. Nobody in the state of California, not nobody, very few local agencies had prepared local road safety plans. So they did provide us a guiding document, how to prepare a local, local road safety plan. So we followed the guidelines provided by them. In the last two years, we have done everything they have shown in this guiding plan. For example, identifying the stakeholders, we did identify that we had multiple public meetings. We had meetings with stakeholders. And that was during the late COVID time, we had some of the Zoom meetings. After that, we had a lot of public outreach. And we collected a lot of data through public outreach and meetings. And they asked us to, they guided us to use safety data. We got our safety data information from Switters and from public survey and our APD traffic data that they keep in our database. So we use that information. Choose the primitive solutions. So there are at least 26 proven solutions that they have shown us. And then we have used that to propose the improvements for the streets in the city. So currently, we have done all this in the last two years, and we are almost at the end of completing the draft local road safety plan. And our ultimate goal is, once the draft plan is complete, it will get approved by Caltrans, and we will have a plan in place so we can start implementing that. Once it's approved, then we'll get some grant funding to do so. I will not go over this one. These are the mission, vision, and goals where prepared by our stakeholders, working group, and the city team. We, as I said, we did multiple outreach events, meetings to get the information, data that we needed to prepare our draft local road safety plan. So I just wanted to show, this is critical data because this we got from a lot of public input. If you're not able to see this, this is, this is the map, and this is the data collected through street story, public survey, and all. So what this shows is that based on the comment, people feel that concern about some of the story, some of the streets here. So these are shown in like in different colors that are, people feel that, people has expressed concerns over those streets. Similarly, based on the street story and survey and comments, people have identified the low intersections that they have concerns over. They have, we have a list of those streets, and we have also shown on the map. This is the heat map that shows all the collisions in the city of Arcata from Switters and from Tims. Not to your surprise, this collision data is almost similar to the intersections and the streets that people have expressed concerns over. So what are we going to do with that? So as I said, there are 26 proven countermeasures that we will be using based on the public input and collision data and the risk factors. We will be using this countermeasures to implement in our local road safety plan. The countermeasures could be as simple as striping and as major as putting a signal or a roundabout. That's extreme. But there are proven countermeasures that will work. These are the risk factors I was talking about. The risk factors like, you know, is there a grade change on the road? If, if there's a curve or there's like a turning, land use if it's close to school, and there's a, if, if at the location there are multiple collisions, and if there's a not proper sight visibility, those are the risk factors that we are using. So based on the locations, collisions, and public input, we have identified the locations, intersections of concerns, and we came up with the countermeasures. So here, this is just for the example, and I'll show you the map later on that what we plan to do with those is. For example, at the intersection of 11th Edge is of concern because we have seen a lot of collisions and we have received feedback from people. So based on the proven countermeasures, item E, F, D, G, K, and B will work at those locations. And we don't have to implement all of those at the same time. So when I said E, F, D, so when you go back here, E, what is the E is improving the side distance. So there is, there's not a proper side distance at that area. So we can improve that in some ways. And then was, there was E and F, one was for striping, and other one was for bulb out. So we don't have to do all those things at the same time, but we have identified what are the countermeasures are, and we will be using that. So what we are doing is, so we have, this, I'm just showing, this is just an example, but we have done this for the whole area where people have asked us to look at. What I will do is, I'll just minimize this and show you the map. So this is the map, which is, I would say, which will match the earlier map that we showed you, where we had a lot of collisions mainly in the downtown area. There were some collisions also in the north of Arcata and also in south of Arcata. So there are some proposed countermeasures. So our map shows, map shows all the countermeasures. We are not able to see it right now for some reason. But, you know, the ultimate goal is to have finalized this map. And once this is finalized, we will present this local road safety plan to TSC and the working group who helped us to do this. Once they provide some comments, we will update those, and we will be submitting that to the Caltrans for approval. And once that approved, we will have our local road safety plan. So we will be in a position to apply for future grants and implement these countermeasures that have been listed here and based on the public feedback and the collision information that we had. So this is just a quick update. Please feel free to ask questions. And as I said, this local road safety plan is specific to city of Arcata. This cannot be used for anybody else or any other city. This is just for specific to city of Arcata, and this could be modified in every five years. Unless we think we need to modify earlier, we will do it early, but we plan to do every five years. That's the goal. So I'll take some questions, and I'm sure you will see this again for approval sometime in April or May. Come back to the council for approval.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Natra. Does anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to know, will we have access to that presentation perhaps? Okay. Thank you. That was a great, informative presentation, and I look forward to getting those grants because I think we will. Thank you.
See it with fresh eyes, yeah.
And you, you did say some of the data came from street stories, correct?
Yes, a lot of that came from street stories and the survey, the online survey that we had.
Yeah, which just is a reminder to people and myself to enter, enter data on that because, yeah, it does make a difference. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for staying around and giving us that. And thank you for all the hard work you're doing. We really appreciate it. All right, we are up to council reports. I will ask everybody to keep it really high level and just hit the bullet points. High level, right? Let's start with Sarah.
You've already heard my only real news, which is that I'm now the chair of the RCEA board, which is really exciting. And we talked a lot about battery storage and had a really excellent presentation, which if you, I, I believe our meetings are posted if you wanted to go back and watch it, but just about electric charging networks up here in Humboldt County. And again, I know folks have already seen, I know my mom said it the other day, she was amazed. There's now chargers at Mad River Hospital, chargers coming to Carlson Park, and just an increase of that charging network. And then also they gave us an update on what HTA is doing about hydrogen fueling and hydrogen buses and that alternative. And it was super interesting to see. So that's all from the RCEA board. And then I will just remind my, my fellow council members, if anybody wants to, to work on it, talk about it, as I did in November. I still support a ceasefire and an end to war and an end to violence.
Thank you. So just a little bit of news from HCOG, the Humboldt County Association of Governments. I serve on that committee, and today there was a CalCOG meeting that I attended virtually. And so that, that is the state agency that represents all of the transportation COGS and groups in the state, and so I am the Humboldt County representative to that. And we went over goals that we had put together from our strategic planning meeting that we had in Riverside in December. And I think it's really interesting just to note that the goals that we, challenges that we talk about here in Arcata and in Humboldt County are far-reaching across the state. So the three main priorities that the CalCOG is, you know, dedicated to working on this year is housing. And again, this is a transportation, you know, driven group. So that shows you the importance of housing. Basically focusing on Reno reforms, the working on the REAP funding and development of housing trust funds. So we were not unique in our pursuit of a regional housing trust fund. It's happening all over the state. Second priority is also public education on the gas tax replacement because that will be coming soon. And that's going to be, you know, once in a hundred-year effort to revamp a situation that's not working for us anymore. And then third is electrification and hydrogenation in rural areas, and exploration of what is needed related to the grid as regions help transition to zero emission vehicles. So again, we are not unique in our struggles with grid capacity. So I think that was all really positive for us in this area because it's stuff that directly relates to what we're going through here, and it will be elevated at a state level. So it's good news.
Did the point in time count? Gosh, was it last Tuesday? It was really informative. Thanks to all the volunteers that came out at 6:00 in the morning to walk or drive around Arcata and count all our houseless individuals. It's really eye-opening. I also volunteered at the Extreme Weather Shelter this weekend. Again, you know, they run on volunteers overnight. So if that is something that you have the capacity to do, I encourage you to volunteer there. They set up that shelter at The Grove. It was very warm in there. It was cozy. People were comfortable. They were watching movies. There were plenty of snacks. I played a mean game of Kings, which I just learned. So, and you know, I just want to say that, you know, this conversation around whether to have a ceasefire or whether not to have a ceasefire, it's obviously, you know, caused so much. caused so much division in the community, which, you know, as the mayor of Arcata, it's my job to make sure that our city and our community feels safe. And it's very hard for me to hear from both sides that people are, are feeling so unsafe and uncomfortable. And I heard from, you know, very, very passionate conversations. And I don't know, you know, what the right path forward is. I do know that all the ceasefire resolutions that I've seen come to my emails have not been something that I'm comfortable with. But I do want to say, as I have sat up here many, many times before, I think I made my first plea against antisemitism my third meeting on the council, which was way back in like September of 2021. And since then, I have sat up here many times defending the BIPOC communities, the queer communities, and many, many other underrepresented communities in this community that I care very deeply about. I think all of us do or we wouldn't sit and, and listen to what we listen to. We're not like robots, right? It's hard to listen to. It's hard to watch. It's hard to see our community in such odds with each other. I, I will say that I wholeheartedly condemn the rise of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism, and xenophobia, speech and attacks on our community and throughout the world. I do want a just and peaceful world for my children and for all the children in the world. And I will continue to fight for curtailing hate and promoting harmony in this community. And, you know, I guess we'll see what comes next. But I do appreciate people that come out and speak their truths. But again, Alex, you're next.
Well, today I had my HTA meeting, Humboldt Transit Authority. And they were reporting that ridership is up, which is good. And the other thing is that the system that we have now, where HTA goes south to Sonoma and then to Mendocino, well, Mendocino, Sonoma, they're making all the connections now. But it's not considered a place where you would just, you know, let's say, let's go to Ukiah and go shopping and come back. It's actually to move you all the way through the system to get down to the Bay Area. And they feel like that's really working well. Um, I did do point of count with Meredith and I was at the shelter for a couple of hours. But then I was so tired, I decided I had to go home because there were four people. But it's interesting to be there and it's interesting to see the people that came and took advantage of the, of the situation of the shelter. Um, so I would say HTA is making progress and I'm really looking forward to, it's going to be a while before we have our hydrogen station, but we will be moving forward on that next week. We're going to have a meeting about dealing with the different buses. And I don't know, I have to read it all before we have that meeting. So Kimberly.
Yeah, I had the honor to attend as an alternate at the HCOG, Humboldt County Association of Governments. And I got to tell you, I had a blast. It was the perfect time to go because they were doing their recap for 2023. I know that we want to make this short, so I'll just quickly go through. HCOG allocated 10.6 million to various programs. And of that 8.3 million was towards transportation, transit agencies. They brought in Danburden. And most of you or many of you attended. There were over 400 residents. HCOG completed a multi-catalog and open house. There's a whole bunch that they did. They held public hearings to solicit transit needs from the community. They joined the Core Hub, the North Coast Offshore Wind Community Benefits as well. And, and finally, they shared the 2024 Regional Transportation Improvement Program, which will be $10.56 million. I also attended the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. We received a presentation from Scott Adair, the Director of Economic Development in the county of Humboldt with an update on the development of offshore wind industry in Humboldt County. We, most of you've already heard about the exciting news that our harbor district received 400 and almost 427 million to develop the harbor for eventual wind power. And I'm excited to announce that I was nominated and voted in as one of the REDEX newest loan board members. I want to remind folks that while we have filled two of the positions at Park and Rec, we still have openings in other committees to include the Economic Development Committee, Wetlands and Creek Committee, and our Public Safety Committee has not been able to meet due to lack of form. So consider serving your city and letting your voice be heard. I also attended the flea market the first of the year, February 4th, which will be the first Sunday of every month at the Arcata Community Center. I went to the farmer's market, community cleanup. And finally, council was invited and wanted to let you folks know that there's a whole home electrification workshop next Thursday, February 15th at 6:30 at the Skirfield Electric Heating and Solar in Arcata. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I think that I will adjourn this meeting with the hope of peace in our community and in the world and hope that we can do a better job of listening and understanding to each other. This meeting is adjourned.